...in nineteen at seven PM at the Milford High School. I'll start with introductions from left to right. Board member Holly Tlapa, board vice chair Kevin Drew. I'm Ron Carvell, board chair. Board member Mike Hannan. Board member Rick Wood is on the telephone and will be participating under RSA 91823. And also joining us is Jessica Hy- Dr. Jessica Heisinger, superintendent of schools. So I first like to open up public comments. I'd ask that you would come to the podium. I have attached the new policies that were adopted at the last board meeting for everyone's review.
Carla Boudreaux, Nine Windsor Drive. Question I had, there's no public comments at the end of the meeting? Was that an oversight or was it planned that way?
It's in the policy. So there is no more public comment.
So it is a calculated to have less and less interaction with the public. I mean, it all goes noticed. Everyone is noticing how much you try and limit any interaction and we can only talk about things on the agenda. You discuss them and then we have no opportunity to discuss them with you. So it's basically saying we don't want to hear from you.
No, that's not what it's saying.
Yeah, because how can I ask a question about a presentation I haven't even seen yet?
Well, because of the presentations, you'll see them, you'll have an opportunity to follow the rest of the policies that you can ask every one of the administrators through the policies that drive to get the questions, but it's not to the board. This is the board's meeting for the presentation for us to ask the superintendent or those that are presenting in front of the board. It doesn't limit any access to the schools. It doesn't limit anything of comments, complaints.
It limits our access to you, who's making policy. That's what it limits.
So policy is made by committee, brought in front of the board, as you've seen the process that we've had. So it's how it's driven.
Okay, so my second question, since I can't ask anything afterwards. I see that policy 2402 is back on the agenda for this evening. There's no comments. Is this meant to be a second reading tonight or have we started to go back through the process and address it the correct way for this time?
So the policy that is on here, as you've noticed on the agenda, it was a tabled policy.
Mm-hmm.
So that policy by rules has to have an action, plus a board member has asked for that to return to the agenda, but it is not here for a second reading. There could be a lot of actions that come to it, but once it's tabled, the rules are that it has to come back out with some sort of action.
All right, thank you. And my last question is, I do not see on here any policies, again, for the fourth meeting in a row, as to putting policies in place for the school board itself on ethics and responsibility that I keep on hearing it's coming and we're working on it.
So they've already been read at the policy committees? That's where there still are for draft and development? They were in the minutes for one of the policy committees and that's where the next policy committee, hopefully they'll be all drafted up with everybody's input and sent forward.
Excellent. And next, I am going to email all of you requesting for the next meeting, I'm just saying it verbally, so it's on record, that I would love to see on our next meeting, a discussion looking at the numbers of paras that were down from last year to this year. And we know we had problems in the classroom with behavior and violent behavior and there were incidents and there were many reports written because of physical accidents that people got injured, whether students or staff. And the union leader just ran an article talking about the same thing. We're not the only district experiencing these problems. Keene School District just had a big discussion about it themselves as well. I would like to see where we are from last year when we knew we had problems with that and now that we're down staff, where those problems are. Are they've increased? Are they getting worse? Are the type of incidents getting worse? So that's my request. I will put it in writing to all of you and ask for the next meeting.
So I'd ask that for the agenda, you follow a policy that says what you want on the agenda, you send to the superintendent's office.
And yourself, I believe it was.
You can copy me, yep, but.
I thought it was the two of you that had to get it.
Yep, you can make sure that you include the superintendent.
Thank you.
Jamie Morgan, 188 Ianan Drive. Actually, I wasn't going to talk, but you brought up a good point of all the policies we need to follow. Milford School Board, policy 2112, board member authority and limitations. The board may only take action at a properly called regular or special meeting where the quorum is present. In other instances, an individual board member, including chair, has only power on the board by vote, has delegated authority to invite. I always do something stupid up here. So you're telling us to follow policy, but you don't follow policy, Ron. I'm done.
Marcia Brew, 11 Foxmoor Circle. My question was also on the public comments, so I don't want to be repetitive with going over the same thing, but I did spend a few minutes researching the surrounding towns in Nashua, Amherst, Mount Vernon, Wilton, Lyndonboro, Ware, New Boston, I mean, pretty close to all of our surrounding towns, all do have public comments twice at the beginning and at the end. A lot of our questions may be able to be answered throughout the content of our meeting. I would ask that it could maybe be at the end of the meeting instead of at the beginning where some of that is just repetitive stuff that you guys may answer during your meeting. And the second thing is a question, I don't know if you can answer this, but did you collectively decide this as a whole board? Was this a whole board-like decision for that policy?
For what? The public comment?
For just having one time to talk about public comments. It was a whole board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Suzanne Shadine, Milford resident, 10 Oxbrook. I just have a couple of questions. I know the policy 2402 is back on here. It says it's tabled, doesn't say second reading, and I appreciate that because we did have a good meeting last week with Kevin, Holly, Cheryl, and myself and Dr. Heisinger. And we went over a lot of things and we sent a lot of our concerns and thoughts showing with some things were very redundant. So I would hope tonight that the board is able to keep that tabled so that they have an opportunity to review the things that we had sent. I also wanted to comment on some of the minutes from September 16th. I know that they were held off last time from being approved because there were some questions and there were some things going to be updated. And I didn't truly see anything that was changed and I was wondering what was changed, if anything.
The ones that are posted have not been changed, but I did review the video and I do have a motion to amend that when we get to the minutes being approved, your comments.
So, okay, so that's going to be changed?
Yep.
And will that be updated on the website then?
Yes, once they're, the amendment that I, after I reviewed your comments and went back and saw it, I'll make a motion for those changes and then they'll come down off the website and update it with the approved ones.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Pete Passolero, 32 Spaulding Street. At the last meeting, Ms. Durand asked why the school board meetings were going from twice a month to once a month. And the response was that according to the minutes was that it's a policy update. Can you help, can you expand on that and the rationale behind having the number of meetings at which not only the community has an opportunity to provide input, but also the professional educators, the students, and others?
It was an update through the policy committee, through council, and that's the policy that got decided. We looked at other communities running one board meeting every two months. We had discussions back and forth, thought it was a little heavy on our side of it, and we came up with that once a month. And that's how it come out of policy committee, came to the board and was approved.
Okay, well, I'd like to ask you to reconsider that policy. As I said last week, and it's not in the minutes, although it's on the video obviously, as I said a couple of weeks back, that this is a $42 million company that you're running, you're responsible for, you've got a CEO and Dr. Heisinger, but more importantly, you've got all these students that are your product, if you will, and shareholders that are the residents and the business people in town. And I think that more time can be spent on not only the numbers, you know, and how the district is doing in terms of the budget, but also in terms of, you know, feedback such as you have tonight, but didn't have at the last meeting from the educators or from the students. It seems to me that by going to one meeting a month, you're actually doing exactly the opposite thing that should be done when you're trying to rebuild the relationship between the school board and the community. If at anything, I would highly recommend that you have two meetings, as you've had forever, at least going back prior to my term on the board some time ago, and even implement a fifth Monday kind of meeting as well. Obviously, you couldn't do it the fifth Monday of the month because that select board's already chosen that for their open, no agenda, anyone come, talk with the board and have their comments, at least voice and sometimes responded to. So I would like you and all five of you to reconsider that policy because I think it really gives you more of an opportunity to not only manage the budget of a $42 million corporation, has $18 million on capital investments that has to be made. That's a lot in and of itself, but the work that our educators are doing and the results that our students are having also need to be factored into those. Now, you might want to do things like having one night being budget and one night being education, you know, rather than taking three hours and trying to squeeze it all into one. But that's up to you. But it seems to me that as you're trying to rebuild the relationship between the board and the community and your staff, that you really ought to have more meetings, not less. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comments, we'll move on to board member comments. Any board member comments?
Sure, I just want to make a quick comment that it was actually really beneficial, I thought, when Mr. Drew and I met with Dr. Heisinger and the MTA representatives to review the policy. And I feel like the feedback we got was viable, so I'm hoping when that comes up for discussion that we do follow suit. I also want to mention that tomorrow, I'm pretty excited to be attending the Region 16 CTE meeting down at Nashua High School North. Also, I took the advice of fellow board member, Mr. Hannan, and took the opportunity to sign up for some upcoming school board member trainings, two of which are tomorrow, school district policy development, which I thought would be really helpful as we go through the process of trying to bridge the gap. I think it is important that we look at all sides. I think that we need feedback from both the constituents of the district in terms of the employees, as well as students, residents, and the policy committee members. The second of which is school construction matters. I think that as we're moving toward the future, we are at some point going to have to open a dialogue about replacing this building. And I think that the sooner that we start to think about that, the better. And the third training that I signed up for is actually school board, let's see what this one was called. Effective school board meetings, which I think would be helpful as well. So I'm hopeful that maybe some of my fellow board members might sign up for that one as well. They're all webinars online. That's all that I needed to say, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other board member comments? Mr. Hannan?
I know the superintendent will be speaking to it, but I did attend the wellness committee meeting on 1010, which I reviewed with you. I thought it was outstanding, so during your piece, if I can just make a few other comments to it, but very excited about the committee having their first meeting for the year. So great job to all the schools that were represented in there. Also echo as far as policy 2402, make sure we have a little more discussion on that and for further table. Two, I would like, also like to have a discussion in regards to public comment for the second, for having two public comments along with additional board meetings during our meeting tonight.
I would also support both of those activities as well.
Okay. All right. Mr. Wood, you're on the phone. Any comments from you?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next is reports and presentations, superintendent's report. Dr. Heisinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give a couple of quick congratulations. First to Steve Erdoti, our middle school teacher who was named the Milford Citizen of the Year. I think Steve's here tonight, congratulations. Also, another achievement award that I want to highlight, Santina Thibodeau, she's our brand-new assistant director of special education. She was formerly the New Hampshire State Directors for Special Education, and she's going to be honored by the National Association of State Directors of Special Education with a lifetime achievement award. So I just want to send a big congratulations to Santina. We're lucky to have her here. We've had great professional development the last couple of weeks, great literacy PD for our elementary teachers. I got great feedback from them on that. Professional learning communities, we had special education training with an international expert, Marilyn Friend, who went over co-teaching with our co-teachers at Heron Pond and also did a workshop on specially-designed instruction for all of our special educators across the district. And I got to attend both, a short session with the co-teachers, and I got to attend some of the specially-designed instruction training. It was excellent and I'm excited to see those practices implemented and moving us more towards inclusionary practices more so than we already are. We've had social and emotional learning training, responsive advisory training continues at the middle school. We've had some restraint training, training on IEPs. The list goes on, but some really good time. And this Wednesday, we have an early release, just a reminder to parents, and teachers will be coming together to get some time to work together and collaborate and do some action planning. We have a parent STEM night. It's not a parent, but it's a whole community STEM night. This Thursday at the high school, beginning at 5:30, Discovery Education is going to be hosting us and putting on a community dinner. We have higher ed coming, we have business partners from all over Milford coming and the greater community. We're going to have a keynote from their vice president on how to go about aligning K-12 education to workforce readiness. We're really excited about it. It's going to be very hands-on and interactive and an opportunity for us to really strengthen and continue to expand our partnerships and really align our K-12 educational system to fill that skills gap that exists in New Hampshire and across the nation. So we're really excited about that. If you haven't RSVP'd, please RSVP, just so that we have enough food for everyone, but you're welcome to walk in if you haven't, and we'll look forward to seeing you on Thursday night. We also had a parent night at Jock's last week on trauma-informed schooling. It was a panel discussion, and I know that Principal O'Connell will talk about that tonight, but it was a really excellent and informative evening on how to best educate students in the least restrictive environment who do have behavioral challenges and to really become a coherent, trauma-informed school. So we were really excited to be able to put that on for parents. We're in the throes of budget development and we're looking forward to sharing the budget with the community in the next few weeks. I know the budget committee has been working weekly and meeting weekly. And the administrative team, I just want to send a big thank you to everyone. They've been working really, really hard. And Jane's been working really hard to get a really fiscally responsible budget that continues to expand our programming for students and move us closer towards achieving the goals of the strategic plan. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Any questions from board members? Okay, thank you. And the Boys and Girls Club of South Hegan Valley canceled earlier today, so they will be rescheduled to another board meeting, correct? So up next is the strategic plan implementation from Principal O'Connell. And I think board members can go to the front row. Are you going to be presenting this?
Yeah, so we'll be projecting up on the screen. I don't know if you want to.
Yep, well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For the record, I do have a copy of this that was forwarded to me by Mr. O'Connell late this afternoon.
Great, thank you. Password?
P-A-S-S.
Oh, boy.
The cat's paw is on.
Oh, thank you, audience members. There we go. Well, good evening, everyone. I want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the work that we're about to embark, or have already actually started, at Jock's Memorial School, and share our action plan with all of you. Before I begin, it has been exactly, or close to, two and a half months since I've started my journey here in the Milford School District. It's been a whirlwind. The learning curve is definitely steep. But before I go any further, I want to thank the leadership from Dr. Heisinger. It's been instrumental in me getting to know my school, the district. I also want to thank members of our administrative leadership team for their support. And so it's just been a great start. So you know, at Jock's Memorial School, it's always been our goal and the goal of the staff there to support our students' development through their social, emotional, and academic growth for their future success at school. We build this strong foundation by having really high expectations, strong teachers, and rigorous curriculum in all areas, the arts, the academics, as well as social, emotional learning. However, I think our most important goal at Jock's is really to instill a passion and a love for learning that'll carry on in our students throughout their academic careers. So I'm sharing this action plan with you. It is not completely fully developed. Members of our action planning committee have just convened a few times, but I will share with you that it is a live and living document for us. We are already started, have already started some of these initiatives and made some great gains and done some work towards accomplishing these goals already, so we're pretty excited. Our first goal is a really important goal. It's aligned to the Milford School District strategic plan, and that is one on student success. And our first building goal is that the Jock School will improve student performance and the foundational literacy skills. And this particular goal ties directly to student instruction, or teacher instruction and student learning around literacy. And our priorities that are listed there will help us accomplish this goal. So we're looking to increase professional development through something called letters. We're implementing a new English language arts program called EL Education through open source. We've learned a lot about the implementation of best instructional practices, things that we've embraced with some of the district initiative that's happening, you know, district-wide. And then our fifth, our fourth priority is to develop and implement a multi-tiered system of supports, which we'll talk a little bit more about. Our first priority in this goal is to provide comprehensive, integrated language and literacy professional development. Prior to this plan, early as November of 2018, staff already engaged in some of this learning called letters. And letters stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. So this professional development provides our teachers with a real, intense, thorough background of the science of teaching kids how to read. This is a really worthwhile endeavor. It is the most recent research on students' ability to learn and master the English language. And like I said, this is the second year of this initiative. Our kindergarten and first grade teachers have already begun this work and have completed several modules of this training, and their future work this year will extend as well into the next year. It doesn't matter what program we use to teach. This is just really good background and information and some real practical strategies that teachers can implement in their classroom. So we're really excited about that. Our second priority is the implementation of our new open-source EL Education English Language Arts Program. This is a very hands-on, standards-aligned, comprehensive program. It's built around authentic texts, so the students are reading real books, not a basal reader. So real books that are built with high text complexity, expanding their vocabulary. The best part, or the neatest part about EL Education is it's very, very hands-on. Our first graders just completed, many of them are just completing their first unit right now, which is titled Tools. And the mentor text, or the main text of this particular unit, is called A Magnificent Thing. And the last week, the boys and girls have been talking a lot about that text, but in addition to that, they've been charged with a problem to solve, which is to create a magnificent thing for their classroom, or in this case, their school. And just at the end of last week, Mrs. McQueeney's first grade class had taken on the task of designing a maze or an obstacle course for the boys and girls to use out on the playground, which I thought was kind of neat. It's really an application of what they've been talking about and learning about through their reading and writing in the classroom and using it to solve a real-world problem, highly engaging. It also contains embedded assessments to determine the development, whether or not the students have mastered those foundational reading skills. And it also contains differentiated materials to provide student support in their acquisition of comprehension skills. And students have the opportunity, again, to engage in lots of writing, authentic discussions, and it's a really comprehensive program. This is a district-wide endeavor. Our priority three is the implementation of instructional best practices, and we are using a book here in the district called Bill Rivas's Book of Instructional Practices that Maximize Student Learning. And I think our goal with this is to really identify what are good, strong instructional practices, name it, use that common language among our staff, and use this to, these practices to build our capacity as a staff, promote classroom culture, and increase teacher clarity and increase student engagement. This was the focus, part of our focus this summer, as well as September 18th for that early release in September. Some of you might be familiar with the multi-tiered system of support. We have a multi-tiered system of support in existence at Jock's School, and basically that is a system of supports that provides additional instruction for students that aren't achieving benchmark, in this case, with literacy. So they haven't made the growth that we want them to make and are needing additional support with that process. So the way that the tiered system works, there's three tiers. Tier one would be whole class, everyone gets this instruction at that level. It's the classroom teachers primarily responsible for that. In addition, they're screened to see if they're making the benchmark, through a benchmark assessment, if they're making the expected growth that we want them to make. The second tier would include, if students aren't making that benchmark that we want them to be at, they might receive some targeted instruction support. And then the third tier would be students who might need some really structured, individualized programming and support for a longer period of time. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, but our multi-tiered system of support needs some solidifying, it needs some refinement. And so one of our goals is to look at our processes now, develop new protocols, identify some new programs to support this multi-tiered system. Our fifth priority in this goal is the establishment of PLCs. And PLCs stand for professional learning communities. A professional learning community is when a group of educators get together and they meet to collaborate and discuss essentially teaching and learning, or what I call the big three, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. This has to be done in a very functional and thorough way, and so the PLC of the professional learning community process is something that we're just beginning to make us, to really make us work and think about how we collaborate effectively as teams towards a common goal. So the PLCs meet and they identify, and their work revolves around these four questions. So what do we want the students to learn? How will we know if they learned it? What will we do if they didn't learn it? And what will they do if they already know it? And then attacking their instruction and developing their assessments and then also looking, taking a close look at the curriculum. Again, this process will be focusing on literacy, and we've been working hard, developing a schedule for our teachers to meet as PLCs throughout the school year, and a lot of the early release times have been designated for that. So that is our first goal around improving literacy. Our second goal, building goal at Jock's, is around social, emotional learning, and this directly links a schedule for our teachers to meet as PLCs throughout the school year, and a lot of the early release times have been designated for that. So, that is our first goal around improving literacy. Our second goal, building goal at Jox, is around social, emotional learning, and this directly links to the Milford Strategic Plan Goal Number Two, around establishing a positive culture. So, Goal Two is the Jox School will foster a collaborative school culture that will provide a safe and nurturing environment for all students and staff. In order to accomplish this goal, we have those three priorities that I've listed there, but schools must be a safe and stable and nurturing environment that is filled with positive relationships between our adults and students. Those things are essential for all humans. It's a fundamental biological and psychological need, especially for our young students, knowing that they can trust and have a positive and stable, safe learning environment at school. We know that students must be taught sometimes these skills and behaviors necessary to become successful at school and in society, and so, this goal focuses not just on the academics that we do at Jox School, but the reality is the teachers, you know, we can't effectively teach, and students can't effectively learn if they don't have the communication, the social skills, because school is a social learning environment, they won't be able to regulate their emotions and truly engage in the learning. So, it is so important that we spend some time in making sure that our culture at the school, we provide the students the needs, their social, emotional needs, we provide them with that safe and secure learning environment. And so, our three priorities with this include adopting practices for our school to become a trauma-informed school. Again, the multi-tiered system of supports for not just the academic supports, but also for the social, emotional needs of students. And then, our focus is also going to be on student health and wellness. So, a little bit more about each of these priorities. Dr. Heisinga mentioned a presentation I gave last week, a parent forum on trauma-informed schools, and one of our priorities at Jox is to become a trauma-informed school. In a recent study, one in every four students attends school, come to school, have been exposed to a traumatic event or toxic stress. These high levels of stress can get away, get in the way of their learning and cause some difficult behavior. So, schools, which are significant communities for our young students, must be adequately supported in order for us to address trauma's impact on learning. And so, our goal is to develop and shared understanding of trauma's impact on learning, to build our capacity through developing the skills and resources to recognize and respond to students with trauma, implement effective school-wide practices and approaches. And we are engaged in a partnership with Walker Consulting. They're a group out of Massachusetts that is supporting us with this work in becoming a trauma-informed school. So, we mentioned the multi-tiered system of supports, and we talked about how that tier one is the skills that we want all students to have, that's delivered in the classroom to all students get these, get that instruction. The same thing happens here with social, emotional leads, needs. As a goal of this, is, the framework is to intervene so that students can develop appropriate social, emotional skills. So, not only will our staff be learning some new strategies and skills to work with these students, we're going to give time and supports for those students in their development of their social, emotional skills. So, we're in the process of identifying a universal screening tool. We are, we have created a PLC team consisting of counselors, called our School Management Team, that'll be working on developing this multi-tiered system of support. And again, our partnership with Walker will help us with this process. Our third priority is one that we've already kind of dug into, really wholeheartedly, is promote healthy learning environment and supporting wellness education and physical Our young students today, you know, I think a regular, a regular health education could definitely benefit our students, to teach them the concepts, skills, and behaviors that they'll need for a lifelong, healthy habits. The importance of increasing your physical activity throughout the school day, this is, there's overwhelming research on this particular topic. The students have the need to move, and there's a, there's a lot of research that connects the body, the movement of the body, the physical wellness of the body connected to the mind, the increase of oxygen, the increase of glucose to the brain. The importance of having regular physical activity as part of our day. We just added a rival recess, so now our first graders have the opportunity to have two recesses outside, to play, engage in each other socially, but also get that physical activity that gets them ready to learn for the rest of the day. We also believe strongly in play-based learning, and so, our third priority, third part of this priority is students will increase their social awareness skills and self-management skills through play-based learning. And we have, just beginning our partnership, similar to Heron Pond with Playworks, which is a group that is looking to develop some of these social awareness skills and self-management skills for students during our recess. Our third and final goal at the Jox School would be to enhance communication, interaction, and collaboration with parents, and build mutually beneficial relationships within the school district and our greater Milford community. And so, our first priority in this particular goal is to use the effective and efficient use of tools and technology to enhance communication, increase family engagement with Jox Memorial School, and increase both intra- and intraschool student activities. So, research indicates that when parents take an active role in their child's learning process, and the school actively looks for those parents to be involved, they perform better in school. I think right now, the Jox Memorial School does a great job engaging with the community in various ways throughout the school year, but certainly, we could, we could do better. We believe this is how a strong bond between the school and the community can be created, and as a result, if the school and the community give the message to the students that this is important, school is important, we believe in what you're doing here, then students receive that message and encourages them to be successful in their academic careers. This is directly aligned with Goal Three of the Milford School District Plan and Goal Four, which have to do with communication and community engagement. Our priorities, again, are effective and efficient use of tools and technology to enhance communication with families and community. So, we have a new school website, it's not quite ready yet, but we're getting there, complete with teacher webpages. We're going to take a more active voice through social media, including Twitter. We're using tools like Parent Pickup Patrol, which just started this week, to help facilitate communication between school and parents around our very challenging dismissal process at times. And then, our monthly school newsletter, which is the Jox Journal, to provide, this is another way for families to get the information they need to support what's happening at the school and support their child's learning at home. Second priority is to increase family engagement. And in this particular priority, we're looking to increase the awareness and opportunities for collaboration between staff, students, and families. Right now, we share this goal with our PTO, they're a reactive organization at both Heron Pond and Jox. They provide us with lots of support in ways where the parents and the school can interact through different activities, but we're looking to, again, improve that relationship and make it stronger. We've added, we want to increase the number of family events this year. We've added some, some key ones. This year, we've added a kindergarten parent orientation the first few days of school. Parents have been invited to have brunch with me. They're doing that again in December, and as well as with Mrs. Brigagliano, our curriculum coordinator. We've hosted several, we've hosted one parent forum, and lots of opportunities to increase events, to have our families come in and join us at the school. Our third priority under this goal is to increase engagement with the community and the school district. So, increase both intra- and intraschool student activities. Tomorrow is going to be our first Reading Buddies Day, where the fourth grade students from Heron Pond will be visiting our first grade students at Jox, so we're pretty excited about that. It's a great opportunity for the boys and girls, and our first grade boys and girls to connect with a peer from the Heron Pond School, someone who might act as a mentor, hopefully, or a connection when they make that transition up to Heron Pond. But also, our hope is just to, you know, have the opportunity to share some reading and a love of literature with one another and just interact. I think there's a lot of benefits for the fourth graders as well as the first graders. Our next part is identifying opportunities for Jox students to engage with the community, and I think there's already some great things that are happening at Jox with it. We have some great relationships with the Wadley Library. We have a great relationship with the local fire department and police department, but we're looking to do more, including more field trips. Kindergarten actually has a unit called Community with their new EL Education, and looking to do some trips to those places as part of that unit, and to engage and visit the fire department, the library, the police department. And we're just really looking forward, I'm looking forward to a great year at Jox. I just want to thank all the support I've received so far as I've begun here once again. This work that you've seen listed here will certainly benefit our students and cannot happen without the continued support of the members of our school board. I want to thank once again Dr. Heisinga. She has provided our district, I think, with a very clear vision, articulated a clear vision to provide some direction with the goals that you've seen up here this evening. And it's very evident that her dedication to making a change and to our students' excellence and student achievements, achievement for all. So, I want to thank everyone again for listening to this presentation, and I hope it's a great year again at Jox. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll have Principal Davis present her presentation, and then the board will return to the table, and then we'll open up the questions from the board to the...
This keyboard connects with that, over there.
Just take a second. We decided to start some updates.
That's interesting, because when I logged out from my office, there were no updates. As usually happens. I think it's going to be quick. Yeah. I always update when it passes me through.
School must be quiet all six years.
Very quiet.
It's been a good weather week.
I don't think it's quite a good one. I don't think it's the worst day possible. It's raining. It's raining today. It's bright on time.
Yeah. Sean jumped out all the time. My mom was looking for a hug. I got mine in before the house.
It is a really memorable thing.
Yeah.
Such a nice drill.
I know. Matthew really enjoyed one.
It's a nice compound.
Sean?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. He talks to Matthew all the time, so he's, there's no reservation. He's up and ready to go.
Housefront's camera is still on the works.
Okay.
So, I'll start while it's warming up. So, I'm so excited to be here tonight and to share with you the exciting work that's taking place in the high school this year. I'm new to the district as well, and I want to first say that I'm overwhelmed by the camaraderie that is occurring in the admin team, the principals, the assistant principals, the curriculum coordinators, the SAU office. I felt incredibly supported, and any questions that I've had, people have been there. I've had SOS phone calls several times to Tony. Tony, what about this? Tony, what about that? And Chantel and Tim have been great as well. I want to say thank you too to Dr. Heisinga, because I feel like I've got a lot of autonomy in my school, but she also asks really hard questions, and so, she's been a great thinking partner, asking me to clarify, to think more deeply about work that I'm doing in my school, and so, I appreciate that so much. And I want to clarify, when I say work that I'm doing in my school, it's really about the teachers and the staff that are there. They are working really hard, and so, a shout-out to them, and I'll show you more clearly that in my presentation as well. So, thank you. So, just a little bit of demographics. This year, we have 813 students at Milford High School. We have 19 ATC students that are coming from sending towns. This year, we have some new faculty members. We have three special education teachers. We have a physical science teacher, a one-on-one assistant that's new, a school psychologist, a school nurse. Our assistant principal is Mike Tenters. He came from the SAU, and now he's an assistant principal at the high school. And a special educator coordinator, Hillary LeCaire. She had been a special ed teacher, and now she's our coordinator for our school, for Drive, and for the middle school as well. So, that is us in a nutshell. We have hit the ground running. So, we have only been in school for eight weeks, and as I compiled this list, I went, wow, we have gotten a lot done. We have had a parent open house. Our treats were made by the culinary department. We had a present, a parent presentation. Richard Anizio, our SRO, did Alice training last year, and he went to Dr. Heisinga for a dream for the district to update its safety procedures. He was given a lot of support in that from Dr. Heisinga, and so, he developed, he went to Alice training, and he developed something similar to that called ELR, Emergency Lockdown Response, and he has rolled that out. He began rolling it out this summer to the administrators. We rolled it out to the teachers. We've rolled it out to the students, and the staff and faculty have not only learned about it, but we've actually had our first practice mock drill, so that when we work with the students the first time near the end of October, that we will, the grown-ups will have already done it once, and so, feel confident in supporting the kids. We had great participation of club and faculty and staff members down at Pumpkin Festival, making visible the work that we are doing in our high school community. We had our first faculty and staff breakfast. It was hosted by the front office staff and the admin team, and there's some great cooks on my team. And so, that was well-attended, and it was a great way to start last Friday. We had our first club fair during lunches. Club fair tables lined the outskirts of the cafeteria, and student volunteers and kids that are part of the club were on the microphone, encouraging kids to come to their, to their clubs and to sign up. So, we thought that that was an excellent way to increase engagement in the high school, and I'm really thankful to the club advisors that we have. We have so many clubs that are offered at the high school, and it takes advisors to make that happen. We've had professional development. We had a whole day of social, emotional learning on October 9th in this room. We are in the middle of Spirit Week, and today was Meme Day, and some of those kids were absolutely hilarious, but I will tell you that seeing them walk through the door, I was like, I don't know what this means. You look really funky, but I have no idea what this means. So, that was pretty fun. Tomorrow is Hawaiian Day, and so, we're looking forward to that. I've already got my skirt and my flowers. We have homecoming, our homecoming event, our homecoming game, so excited about this, is our girls' volleyball game. So, we are breaking with tradition, and we are celebrating the young women in our community, our school community, and they are doing fabulously well this season, and so, our homecoming game is the girls' volleyball game. And then, we have a homecoming dance Saturday night. We've already given the PSATs. We have college planning and financial aid seminars already offered, and we also had two parent scheduling forums, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that next. it, but we've actually had our first practice mock drill so that when we work with the students the first time near the end of October, that we will, the grownups will have already done it once and so feel confident in supporting the kids. We had great participation of club and faculty and staff members down at Pumpkin Festival, making visible the work that we are doing in our high school community. We had our first faculty and staff breakfast. It was hosted by the front office staff and the admin team and there's some great cooks on my team. And so that was well attended and it was a great way to start last Friday. We had our first club fair during lunches. Club fair tables lined the outskirts of the cafeteria and student volunteers and kids that are part of the club were on the microphone encouraging kids to come to their, to their clubs and to sign up. So we thought that that was an excellent way to increase engagement in the high school. And I'm really thankful to the club advisors that we have. We have so many clubs that are offered at the high school and it takes advisors to make that happen. We've had professional development. We had a whole day of social emotional learning on October 9th in this room. We are in the middle of Spirit Week and today was meme day and some of those kids were absolutely hilarious. But I will tell you that seeing him walk through the door, I was like, I don't know what this means. You look really funky, but I have no idea what this means. So that was pretty fun. Tomorrow is Hawaiian Day and so we're looking forward to that. I've already got my skirt and my flowers. We have homecoming, our homecoming event, our homecoming game, so excited about this, is our girls volleyball game. So we are breaking with tradition and we are celebrating the young women in our community, our school community, and they are doing fabulously well this season. And so our homecoming game is the girls volleyball game. And then we have a homecoming dance Saturday night. We've already given the PSATs. We have college planning and financial aid seminars already offered. And we also had two parent scheduling forums and I'm going to tell you a little bit about that next. So our work this year, this summer, I had a chance to sit down with the faculty and faculty and staff and invited them in to come and talk to me about different aspects of the strategic plan. As you know, there's four domains. There's student success, culture, communication, and community engagement. And so I asked faculty and staff to come in and give me feedback on that. What would it look like for our students to be successful? What would that mean in our schools? And so we got a lot of feedback on, you know, what does rigor mean? We had some wonderful conversations. Then I looked at the other work that was done last spring about the school, looked at the strategic plan, and I sat down with my administrative team and using the feedback from faculty and staff and using the discussions that we had as a team, we said, what do we need to do at this school, at the school level to lay a foundation to be able to meet the challenges and the opportunities that are presented to us in this strategic plan? And so our goal was to build structural and professional capacity to meet the five-year Milford School District strategic plan goals. This is a five-year plan and I keep telling myself that. Rome is not built in a day. I am incredibly excited about the strategic plan. I came from a district that did not have one and I felt that every year we kind of ambled through the year and we didn't have a clear focus on the direction that we were going. And now I feel that we do. I feel like we have a clear direction and a focus and I'm excited that the strategic plan is our North Star. And I agree with the elements in it. I feel excited by it and feel like it is, it is possible for us to not only meet those goals, but to supersede them. And then we wanted to meet the operation and operational and cultural building needs that the faculty and staff had. Some of the things that came up this summer were those pebbles in the shoe, sort of things that you could easily fix. Like for example, when we had morning announcements, there's a barrage of kids and people down saying announcements and the, and once they were all over, only half of them made it to the actual announcement page. So all day long, kids would come down, hey, what is that? When is that happening? And so we've put some structures around morning announcements where kids are still involved, they're still able to give announcements, but they have to send an email ahead of time. And so those, those little tweaks that we've made within the operation of the school to make it just run more efficiently, but all of those ideas, they didn't come from me, they came from the faculty and staff who knew their building well. So based on my work with the administrative team, we came up with 10 strategic plan action teams. And then we said, this isn't going to be forced on anyone. We want volunteers. We want to put it out there and say, these are the 10 teams. Would you like to be a part of it? Find something that you're interested in. And the teachers and the staff really rose to the challenge. We have 78 faculty and staff members in the building and 64 of them are members of teams. The people that aren't members of the teams, that doesn't necessarily mean they're uninvolved. Recently, we had a day where people were working in their strategic plan action teams and the people that weren't on a team made absolutely phenomenal PowerPoints on different instructional strategies. So they were still contributing. So the message that I want to send to you is that the faculty and staff are engaged and they are doing incredible work. And I'm going to go over that more now. But this is what I said to them. This is my first year. I'm, I'm getting to know this faculty and staff. I'm getting to know the building. I'm getting to know the kids. And we don't have an ongoing curriculum plan like some of the other schools did or something that was in the works before the school year started. So for us, this is what I said. This is our first year implementing the plan. So this is an organizational, foundational, learning and researching year to embark us on this exciting journey. So you can, you can see where you want to go, but you have to build the foundation under it. And so that's what we're doing. And so I'm going to tell you about the plans that we have in place. These are our 10 plans. I won't linger on this slide because I'm going to go over all of them in detail. The strategic plan action teams are made of staff members, faculty members, administrators, students, and parents. We have one team that's open to parents and that is our school to community connection. And we have a couple, three community members that have asked to be a part of that. Students, students were recently asked if they would like to join teams and we have, I believe it's 14 or 15 students who have said, can I please be on a team? And those students have been put in contact with those teams and those teams are sharing them when their meeting times are because I truly believe that student voice has to be that thread that runs through this entire process, that we need to keep our kids involved. So the first one is the safety team. So every team was given goals or created goals that would help guide their work this year. So as I've already told you, a little bit of background to the safety team. Officer Adenizio felt that this was very important and last year when I interviewed for this position, this came up with the students and they said, we feel like we need better structures in place around safety, around evacuation, around fire drills. And so that was a priority for me as well. So what they're doing right now is they're updating and enhancing our current safety protocols, but they're, we're also looking at preventative. How do you prevent violent situations? And you do that by preventing bullying and harassment, by having plans in place to address it, but also by building that, that community. And so they'll be doing some research around that. There's a survey that we can give to kind of get a feel for where our school's at with this really important topic. The progress, so for every single one of these action plan teams, as I compiled this presentation, I was incredibly excited about the work that the, the teachers and, and the teachers and the staff have been doing. They, in eight short weeks, have made tremendous progress. So we purchased rolling carts for the school-wide evacuation to rally points. We presented and practiced the emergency lockdown response. I told you that. And we have our first evacuation drill planned for late October where we will go to rally points. Our two rally points are the church and the middle school. And so we're poised and ready to go. We're organized for that. And this falls into our strategic plan objectives, number two, culture. The district and building safety procedures and protocols will be reviewed and updated to meet current safety standards and other identified need areas as prioritized by administration in 2022. I think that we have made incredible progress towards that. And we'll have three more emergency evacuation drills or I'm sorry, emergency lockdown response drills before the end of the year. We're only required by, by law to do two. We're going to do four because we want to make sure that the four scenarios, lockdown scenarios are practiced by faculty, staff, and students before the end of the year. So next we have the scheduling team. And the question that drives our scheduling team is, how does the structure of our school day provide the opportunity for all students to succeed? And so the scheduling team has been working incredibly hard. They hit the ground running. They've been meeting weekly and this is their teamwork and the goals that they have. So what we did was we did a SWOT analysis. I started this summer when I was speaking with teachers and I heard some parents as well, concerns with the schedule, concerns that perhaps especially in art and music. And recently, we had Bradley Smith of our music department at the high school do a full analysis of why our numbers are dwindling in music and schedule was part of that. And so we had the opportunity to say, okay, I'm new here. Let's look at it. Let's do a SWOT. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. What are the strengths of our current schedule? What are the weaknesses? What are the opportunities that we could have if we reimagined our schedule? And what are the threats? What could go wrong? What are we not thinking about? So I went through that with the administrative team. I went through it with the scheduling team and I was very impressed with the thoughtfulness of the teachers as they were thinking through the current schedule and many of them have used that schedule for, for 20 years. And so for them to be able to enter into that dialogue thoughtfully and reflectively was, was pretty amazing. And so then Mr. Tebow's AP Probability and Statistics class created a survey for us that we could give out to all the teachers. And so that was given to teachers and there were thematic ideas in it such as, you know, how many, how many minutes do you realistically need in order to teach the content day by day? How much time for homework do you normally give in a period? There was a huge amount of, of questions that were asked. Once the survey was done, those AP students are now analyzing the data for us. So this is a real world opportunity for them. We had a parent forum and a student survey is planned as well. So we're going to make sure that we get all of the input from the different stakeholders as we move along through this process and it's not a one-time only checking in. As we develop, as we look at some of the schedules that, that, you know, we might be tweaking our schedule, we might be totally changing it. We're not there yet. A decision hasn't even been close to being reached. We will continue to include our stakeholders. One of the things that Kristi Micho suggested to us is she said, go out and visit other schools. And so some of our teachers are going to go out and do that. Where also, I put an email out to other administrators in, in the Granite State and said, if you have the four-by-four schedule, how did you meet some of the challenges we've identified? If you got away from the four-by-four schedule, how did you do that without making any big blunders or mistakes? So I've gotten some great feedback from them and I'm going to talk in person with some of those principals and then I'll share that back to the scheduling team. So we are, one of the things that we're looking at as we look at, how does the structure of our school day ensure that all students have an opportunity to succeed? We're looking at something called an activity period or a task period, a win period. It's something that other school districts in our area use and it's a time during the day that kids, our students can get enrichment, they can get remediation. It's a time when a club could meet. It's a time when a guest speaker could come in. Guidance could hold special groups for, let's say that they need to hold a grief group. There's time built into the school day for that to occur. A lot of our student athletes would like to be involved in more extracurricular, club-like activities, but they're, if they're a three-seeded athlete especially, they can't do that. So this would hit, check off many boxes and the scheduling team is pretty excited about that. We don't know a lot, but we do like, we do know we like that concept. We know a lot, but we haven't made decisions. We've got a lot of information to go through. And we're, they are going to, the scheduling team, make scheduling recommendations to the administrative team. You know, once a schedule is made, you really have to look at what is the impact on teacher FTEs? What is the financial impact to the district? And so that becomes the administrative team's work to look at those schedules and to think through those things. And of course, we would include the school board and the, and the district administration on that. So then the scheduling team is also, they've signed up for a lot. Once a new schedule is decided upon, they'll be in charge of saying, okay, now what could go wrong? What are we going to do about, you know, our seniors who, who have this plan in place and we don't want a fruit basket upset? We don't want to leave any kid behind. So they would be helping address those issues that could come up. So under student success and culture, by 2025, curriculum and instruction across all content areas will be paced to reflect learning needs tailored to learning preferences and specific interests with multiple opportunities for growth and success. So our question is, how can we improve upon this schedule to meet our strategic plan Social emotional learning teams and multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS. Principal O'Connell told you quite a bit about MTSS and we are bringing that this year to the high school. Our social emotional team has, has worked hard already. They are going to lead the way as we develop a school-wide plan to address the social, emotional learning needs of all students. There are already many great tools in our teachers' toolboxes when it comes to social, emotional learning. What has become clear to me early on is the teachers in our building really care about our students. And so this is adding additional tools and it's also creating a baseline of, of interactions, of interventions that we use with students across the board in every classroom. And so it's just building on the good work that we already do. But as you can see, in our strategic plan, there are three priority areas that are associated with social emotional learning. I won't read all three of them, but one of them is that all staff will learn strategies to teach, embed, and integrate social emotional skills into learning environments by June of 2022, as demonstrated by a district professional development plan for doing so. So we are already well on our way. The social emotional team looked at the CASL frameworks that were recommended in the strategic plan and they came up with five school-wide strategies that teachers could use in their classroom, teachers and staff members, and with several examples on how to implement them. So their five areas are making connections, kindness, mindfulness, movement, so movement within the 90-minute class period, and self-care. And so under those five strategies, they gave a lot of great examples for teachers to use while they're working with students in the classroom. So we are going to make that our school-wide learning objective. So usually every year, teachers come up with individual goals that they set for themselves and then they gather data. So they, they have a goal and they work towards that goal. They gather the data and they say, did this instructional strategy, did what I tried worked? In my past practice, I've always said to teachers, fail forward. Try something. If it doesn't succeed, you know you tried it. Now on to the next thing. What we're doing this year is something different. We are working together as a team and we're saying, if we make these five emotional, social, emotional strategies part of our everyday work, will students be impacted through referrals to discipline and through attendance? And so that is what we're tracking and we're going to measure our success as a school. So I'm really excited about that. The SEL team is also going to begin multi-tiered systems of support training. So that is for social emotional skills, but it also has a behavioral and academic component because when you meet the social emotional skills of a child, they are in a better position to learn. And so we are going to be focusing on that and they're in a better position to do what they're supposed to do and follow the, the discipline code of the school. And so we're going to be doing that training in both November and then in January for full days, our social emotional team, and then half days during the spring. So I believe that quality relationships are at the heart of a healthy school community and so we have a staff and faculty culture team. And their, their job, their task is to make the school a happier, friendlier place. And I've already heard that the high school, I came into a high school that the faculty and staff worked well together, they cared about each other. And so we're just going to be continuing and building upon that. So we're going to celebrate our community. We're going to create opportunities for faculty and staff to socialize and we're going to revitalize the Sunshine Fund. And so already, they have organized the Sunshine Fund and we're already getting donations for that. We are going to be auctioning off a pair of Beats headphones. When we got a laptop for the school this summer, lo and behold, we got a free pair of Beats to go with it. So we're going to raffle that off to raise money for our Sunshine Fund. And the faculty and staff breakfast will be on October 18th. We already had it and I told you about that. And then they started a You've Been Mugged event. So they mugged teachers by giving them a cute mug filled with cool stuff and teachers got a little sign outside their classroom that they had been mugged. So fun stuff going on. This falls under the strategic plan objective of culture. Milford School District will promote a positive culture that ensures all staff and students feel safe, secure, engaged, challenged, and supported. And I want to tell you what the Sunshine Fund is, is it's for people celebrating life events or who have gone through a difficult life event. So it's rallying around somebody as a community to, to show them how much they care about them. The wellness team, the wellness team was in place and was an active team before this school year. They're continuing their work forward, but they have been able to have other members join them. So the wellness team encourages healthy practice in both adults and students. And so the, this goes under student success, culture, and community engagement. And so one of them is that we will increase the number of lessons around emotional safety and navigating challenging situations. We'll learn about health, wellness, and emotional safety and how to successfully navigate challenging situations. So already, this team is like off and running. So we have mindfulness Mondays and it's meditation and it's taught by our teacher, Ashley Del Greco. We have wellness Wednesdays where in the morning announcements, they have topics such as wellness and healthy lifestyle. The weight room is opened many mornings and many afternoons. We've been offering snacks outside the nurse's office and I am amazed. I will pass by and it'll be a full basket and I'll come by 90 minutes later and it will be empty. And that means that kids are eating apples and oranges and bananas and they're making healthy choices during the school day, which will help them with their learning. And then active minds, students participated in a youth summit and they've got plans upcoming. They're going to be offering a healthy snack to a student, students, not one, wellness slideshows to be played during lunches, and a wellness fair in the winter. So the wellness team is off to a great. So, the wellness team is off to a great start. The student life and engagement team, they are meeting the strategic plan objectives of student success, culture, and community engagement. By 2024, we will increase student community engagement by shown, as by doubling the number of developmentally appropriate, community-based extended learning and service opportunities annually at each school. So, they are looking at ways to increase involvement in clubs and activities, looking for a feeling of belonging in the community. That is our starting point. Down the road, we want to introduce community service opportunities as well. So, they're reviewing the literature on student engagement. How do you get students more involved? Research has shown that students who are involved in an extracurricular activity do better academically. It goes hand-in-hand, because when students feel ownership in a school, where they feel like it's a place where they belong, they in turn care more about their studies. Creation of student focus groups, and creation of a student survey on engagement that's ready to be sent out, and we recently had the club fair that I mentioned. The grading and reporting and assessment team is looking at grading and reporting and assessment. And what the idea is, is this is truly a foundational year, and so, it's a researching year, it's a learning year. So, what they are doing is they are laying out philosophical and a practical understanding of fair grading practices. So, we're having discussions, or they're having discussions on, what does a zero mean? What about retakes? What about deadlines? What do they mean? How can we prepare kids for the real world? I would say that high school is the real world, just not the world we inhabit, but how do you prepare them for to be good employees? And good partners, and good members of their community if they haven't learned how to meet a deadline? And so, how do you weigh that with helping students reach competency in different areas of the curriculum? And so, those discussions are being had, and they have, they are finishing up, reading a book already in the first eight weeks of school called "On Your Mark" by Thomas Guske. It is a flagship book that really kind of laid open, what is fair grading and reporting practices for students? And what is fair assessment? And how do we really know that kids know what we hope they know by the end of a unit? So, exciting work. So, we will, and that goes into student success strategic plan objective. We will develop an assessment system that supports and informs district progress towards student mastery of the integrated curriculum. So, next is the restorative justice team. The restorative justice team is researching alternative ways to respond to inappropriate student behavior. We want students to not feel disengaged when they have acted up in school. We want a restorative model rather than a punitive model. What do we do when a student has done something that has separated them from the community? How do we help them make it right? How do we put structures in place that help students learn from their mistakes and grow from their mistakes? So, this team was provided with some restorative literature books, and they have been reading, they've been researching, they've been talking, and now they're, they have a complete action plan, and they are starting to go out and talk to other schools that are using this, and one of them is Hanover High School. And they will be traveling to Hanover to talk to their restorative justice team. And so, the strategic plan objective culture is students will demonstrate social-emotional competencies and self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, self-management, and relationship skills. So, we are hoping that children or young people will be more successful if we are more careful about how we interact with them when they have broken the discipline code or separated from their community. The technology team addresses our mission statement, really. You know, when we created that, there was a need to really look at, how are we using technology in the building? What are our technology needs? And the mission says, "Milford School District will provide an authentic, rigorous, and personalized experience for all students, so they can pursue their passions and become reflective, empowered, and contributing citizens of an ever-changing world." And in the center of that is technology. And so, how do we provide for our students appropriate access to technology? How do we teach them to navigate it in a safe way? And how do we make sure that it enriches their learning experience? So, this team is looking at, do we need one-on-ones? Or are Chromebook carts meeting the needs in the classroom? What do we need? What kinds of different programs and apps? When I was creating the budget this year, there were requests from departments for different computer programs to use in their curriculum. It would be great if the technology team could also be helping people find those great resources that are out there, while also making sure that student privacy, because a lot of things that are available to use don't necessarily protect student privacy. We also talked about the implementation of Gen Yes, or another student-powered initiative. This is like a technology help desk. This is taking technologically savvy students and giving them a way to use this in the community, use their skills in the community. And I've seen in other school districts where students actually earn credit for being part of a help desk, and helping teachers with technology, and helping fellow students with technology, or even learning how to change a Chromebook screen that's been cracked. So, there's some great opportunities here. And so, so far, they've created a school survey to understand what technology exists. So, I'm glad that they are first going to the teachers, and this hasn't been sent out yet, but going to the teachers and saying, "What are your technology needs?" We have a school-to-community team, and this is the one that parents are invited to be a part of. So, consider ways the school can become a visible and contributing part of the wider Milford community. You know, this is our community school. This isn't just for the parents of students, or the grandparents of students, or the aunts and uncles of students. This is everyone's community. The young people that we are educating here, they're going to grow up, and they're going to be our nurse's aide, they're going to be the person who fixes our car, they're going to be our dentist, they're going to be our lawyer, they're going to be interacting with us in the community. And so, they're our community's treasure. And so, we need to get that community-school connection strong, looking at community service and recommending community service events. And so, already, the community engagement team has created a survey to learn about all the existing outreach efforts that we already have, because we don't want to go down a pathway where we were not aware that this already good work is being done. Because there are community service-based clubs here at the school. So, we want to expand upon what we're doing, not duplicate what we're doing. So, also, our work this year is we have some additional school initiatives. We have the professional learning communities, which Principal O'Connell has described. We are, we have not had a consistent opportunity at the high school to work on curriculum and assessment together. And so, this gives teachers an opportunity to sit down together and share what they're doing in each other's classroom, and plan for future curriculum. One of the work that we need to do at the district is vertical alignment. And even if it's at the high school level, but we know in some places, K through 12 is worthwhile looking at, and there's been some work around that, but we need to think about vertical alignment here at the high school. What does it mean to be a ninth-grade English student versus a 12th-grade English student? And what are the differing expectations as they move through our curriculum? And so, we are also embedding high-quality instructional strategies into teaching practices, and that is that Green Book, built by, or built by, really, it's built, it's thick, was written by Bill Rebus. Principal O'Connell referred to it. And so, we got training on it last spring. And so, I mentioned earlier, the work of some of the teams, and they already created some PowerPoint slides to refresh our memory of those instructional strategies, and we're going to carry those forward. And so, I'm just incredibly impressed with the work that the staff and faculty are doing. I'm excited about the student involvement and the parent involvement, and I'm just really hopeful and excited for the progress that we will continue to make at the high school. Thank you.[1144.33][1144.33][applause][1145.33][1145.33][applause]
Okay. So, any board member questions for Principal Davis?
Oh, great, okay. Holly brought up a really great comment. You don't have to be a parent to be part of the community-school connection team. I would love community members to get involved with that. So, thank you, Holly.
Oh, questions?
So, I guess we'll put you up there first. Any board member questions of Principal Davis?
I just want to say, I am so impressed with all 10 of the initiatives. I think that it made me feel so good as both a parent and a school board member to sit and listen to every fantastic way that you are involving students, staff, and faculty to help implement the strategic plan, to also get real-world, as you call it, experience that really will carry over. I think all the initiatives have tremendous merit, and I hope that you continue to recruit student participation, as well as both resident and parental participation. It's a lot of great work that's happening, and it makes me proud to be a member of this community. So, thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Drew?
You mentioned the restorative justice team, and you'd be visiting Hanover High School, so I guess they've been doing this for a little while?
Yeah, they have. And what excites me about Hanover High School is they have the most active student body in New Hampshire. They have a council that actually, you know, one person described to me that they went there and they were watching the students, and the students were discussing whether or not coaches should be having a practice every day during Christmas break. And they were given the power to discuss those and to come up with what they thought was a fair and equitable solution. And Hanover High School is the number-one high school in the state. So, that said to me, when you open it up and you get kids involved, you're only going to make your community richer. So, yeah, they have been doing it for quite a while. So, the restorative justice piece is part of that student voice, and the neat thing about restorative justice is there's a strong peer-to-peer element. You know, some things do need to be handled by adults, and there's some discipline situations that, you know, zip off the restorative justice radar. But for most, there's really rich work that can be done, and skills that are being set up for kids that will follow them their whole lives.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Mr. Wood, any questions for Principal Davis?
Not at this time.
Okay. Great, thank you. How about Mr. O'Connell? Any questions for Mr. O'Connell on his presentation, from any board members? Mr. Drew?
You mentioned one of your goals, to promote healthy activities and offer the students. Is there a nutritional component for that, to that also?
I think a lot of the nutritional education would be part of that health education program that we adopt. In addition, there's a lot of nutritional education provided to students and guidelines that are developed not only by your policies, but also the Wellness Committee, which is a really, as Principal Davis mentioned, a really active committee, not just at the high school, but I think district-wide. So, our hope is that through this push towards a more regular, more comprehensive health education program, that nutrition would definitely be part of that explicit teaching to the young students. You know, there's certain things that would not be, you know, appropriate for kindergarten or first grade, but I think healthy eating habits, being aware of what you're eating, you know, the five major food groups, the food pyramid, those basic concepts would be appropriate. Yes.
I also just wanted to thank you as well for all the effort that you're putting into creating opportunities at the Jocks Elementary School as well, for both, I think it's fantastic that the fourth graders are going to come down and do the buddy program. I know I have a fourth grader who is quite excited about tomorrow, she's been looking forward to it. Also, you know, Mrs. McQueeney's class, you know, taking a lesson that they're working on and designing a maze for the other students, it's really bridging the gap between what we're learning and what the needs are in the marketplace from such a young age. And I think that it's imperative, because that really is the foundation. That's when kids get excited about learning, that's when they start to make the connections. So, I was really excited as well by your presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, we're really excited about that program, and you're right, the real-world application of skills at first grade, it's pretty powerful stuff, so.
Really is.
Great. Mr. Wood, anything from you?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, the Jocks journal presentation, I found very helpful. I did mention to Mr. O'Connell, one of the things that's helpful about that level of communication, as somebody who is a working parent, trying to stay connected back and forth with what's going on in my child's life, I think it's really helpful to have those types of information coming home. So, even though you can't be there all the time, you certainly can track what's going on and feel connected to the school. So, great job.
Thank you. Yeah, the first few issues, September and October, have been published, so we're looking forward to putting together a November issue. And again, it's just another way, a tool that we can use to help communicate how families can support and be aware of what's happening at our school. So, thank you.
Great. Any other board member question?
I guess I only have one comment, is I know that both in your presentation and Mrs. Davis' presentation was that, you know, we were aligning resources and the needs at every tier's level. Is that something that this board is going to start seeing in the budgets for next year as we start to build the budgets and start identifying needs of resources? Is that in next year, or is that in a couple years down the road? Or are we starting to identify those and start pushing those in forward for the budget build, I guess, for next year?
I can't speak to Principal Davis, but I will say, for the Jocks budget and putting that budget together, and thinking very carefully about, you know, wants and needs, and prioritizing, and thinking about those building goals that you just saw, and the priorities that support them, yes, some of the budget requests and things that we're looking to do will affect our budget for the upcoming school year. So, I think there's a direct correlation between the budget for Jocks and the building goals that you saw from Jocks, as well as the budget that I am proposing moving forward, all three supporting that. So, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. So, what I would like to do is, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion for the board for those in the audience to be able to ask questions to the two principals while they're here on this presentation. If I could have.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Wood, you in favor? Okay. So, I'd like to open it up for any of those in the audience that would like to ask questions to the principals on that presentation.
I had a question, Mr. O'Connell, and it might be actually for you too, Dr. Isaac. And just coming from my own personal experience, in trying to decipher literacy problems in younger children, and get them into, back when my kids were there, Title I. But are we doing anything also within Jocks School to, once we've identified there's a problem, to dig deeper into it, to see is there some type of learning disability? Personally speaking, for one of my children, dyslexia. We didn't, you know, I brought it up early, it wasn't even addressed until third grade as a possible, and it was. So, I'd love to see if there is such an issue, and we're seeing it with literacy scores in the young kids, what are we doing to address it as soon as possible, if that's built into the program as well?
Yes. So, this year, we've actually moved to a different screener called Acadians, and we also are looking at early dyslexia screeners. There are new ones that are coming out that are going to help us to identify those. All students who are falling below benchmark, they get a Tier Two intervention, and that is a push-in. We have Title I tutors at Jocks Memorial. And this year, we were lucky enough to have the support of the Milford community to have reading specialists at each of the elementary schools. And those reading specialists are able then to provide an additional, more intensive Tier Three level of support for students who need it most, and they get it more than just the push-in, they get a more intensive level of reading support. And by all accounts and reports that I've gotten from Jocks, from the curriculum coordinator, we have an outstanding new reading specialist there, and the Title I tutors, I was just at Jocks the other day, and the Title I tutor was bopping down the hallway, happy, saying, "I love being able to push into the classrooms and to be able to provide that Tier Two intervention." So, the tiered system seems to be up and running, going well. We just got our preliminary fall screening data, it looks actually very good. And the new literacy program is really off to a strong start, so we're really pleased with what we're seeing.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And I don't have any at your school anymore, but I'm glad things are going well. And Ms. Davis, I have met with you, and I liked all the initiatives that we have going on so far, moving forward.
So, the tiered system seems to be up and running, going well. We just got our preliminary fall screening data. It looks actually very good. And the new literacy program is really off to a strong start. So, we're really pleased with what we're seeing.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And I don't have any at your school anymore, but I'm glad things are going well. And Ms. Davis, I have met with you, and I liked all the initiatives that we have going on so far moving forward. I think it's great. And I think scheduling definitely needs to be looked at on many levels that we've talked about. And, but I'm glad that we're looking at those things so that we don't stop offering lots of opportunities, and all the kids can get into those opportunities, which I'm afraid that's not happening. And maybe we can come up with a better idea on how to do it.
Great. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question too? Back to the grading change. So, I know that there had been discussions in the past about competency-based, and I think it's important to have a component of competency-based. But I wanted to commend you as well for looking into the options of holding kids accountable and to best prepare them for life beyond high school, shall we say. I know that some districts give you ample opportunity to turn in late assignments, and there's no, you know, negative detriment to the student. And I don't think that necessarily prepares people for success. So, the fact that you're really investigating it, and I would encourage you to reach out to, you know, numerous schools and incorporate any study data you can find, as well as reaching out to the teachers within our district, and then maybe potentially students who have already graduated from our district. One strength I think we do have is that we hold kids accountable here. Not every district in the surrounding communities do it to that level. So, I hope that that continues moving forward as well.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make one comment? I just want to say thank you to Ms. Davis and Mr. O'Connell. You'd never know that Ms. Davis started July 1, and Mr. O'Connell really didn't even start till almost August. And to see the amount of work that's happened just in a few weeks, and just to see, again, the cohesiveness of the leadership team, thank you to Mr. DiMarco, thank you to Ms. Alcox for being here tonight to support your colleagues, and Jerry, you and Bill as well. It's just great to see everyone rowing in the same direction, the strategic plan. Thank you to the board for passing it and approving it this summer. It has given us a North Star. It has driven our budget conversations. And the requests that will be coming before the board really has helped us to prioritize and direct as a team. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for all the hard work that you've done. I think the community's going to be very excited and pleased with the proposal when it's ready.
Absolutely. Great job. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is an exit interview summary report. Every board member has that in the packet. I know that this is the first run of an exit interview report under the new policy. I'm not sure if there's, board members have any questions, and I'm not sure that we can have any questions because this report is really outside of your creation. It's created by the HR department in accordance with policy, and she is on vacation. But the report is there for the board members.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on a second.
Okay. I did have one question on that.
So, the policy, I mean, the report is there. It's kind of a new format. It comes from probably some software system or some exit interview system. But the data's there. But I do think that there may be a future board meeting where Laura, our HR person, can may answer questions from the board. But Ms. Loppa, you have a question that maybe can be answered?
It's a simple question. The color chart is a little confusing. I just wanted to ask, is the 31% unknown and the 10% retirement, or is it the other way around? I can see every other category with the exception of.
I will take my best guess that I think 31% is the retirement, and the other blue is the 2% of termination of cause.
So, the 10% is. No, the termination of cause. I can see why it's difficult to see. I made that same comment, and some of the colors were changed, but not that one.
So, retirement is 10%?
Yes. Retirement is 10%. No. Is it 31% and then unknown 10%? Retirement is 10%. Sorry, retirement is 31%. I apologize. And 10% is unknown. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other board member general questions that, we probably should look at this when another board meeting, just to bring this back up. But it's good to get through it in the policy and have it presented so the board can get back and dig into it. Okay?
Yep.
Mr. Wood, any questions on that exit interview summary report?
No questions. Just a comment. I found the report actually very helpful to understand, you know, where things are in the district and what we've just experienced over the last year or so. So, I'm looking forward to the Miami off-pace.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So, next on the agenda is quarterly reports. First one is the Granite Town Media Advisory Committee, which I attended. The meeting was in October 3. They are working on some policies and procedure discussions and drafting, a couple drafts of their policy book. They're also seeking to add headcount to assist with the Granite Town Media productions of all the things going on in town. And the other thing is that, one thing I wanted to mention was trying to increase sports coverage of different events on the field. And they are welcome for anyone that wants to volunteer, to learn their equipment, come out and help cover sports events or any other events in town. So, there is a need there of getting students possibly, or other members, involved in Granite Town Media.
May I start the wellness?
Yep. So, next on the wellness, next on the quarterly reports is the Wellness Committee from Mr. Hannah?
Yeah. Outstanding, like I mentioned before in my comments. First meeting of the year where all the schools came together and had our meeting on 10/10. That was my first ever meeting, and I really didn't know what to expect. But two hours later, I was pretty excited of all the information that was coming out, exactly what the Wellness Committee is all about, and how everybody in the community can help with the committee, you know, and the students and the teachers and faculty. It's a well-organized, made some notes, well-organized changes made to the committee based on the district strategic plan. Mr. DiMarco is already well ahead of it. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but listening to what he's already has going into the middle school is pretty exciting. It's not a one-year plan. It's, correct me if I'm wrong, 2022 is really getting it up and running to where you'd like to see it. Is that correct? Yeah. So, it's, everybody was there, great cookies, everybody wants to come out. So, you know, a little fast on the wellness thing. I don't know where the cookies came into play. But.
Are they gluten-free?
I don't know. I didn't, I looked. Never mind. But we definitely talked about different opportunities and improvement of existing programs to get everybody involved in the effects of everyone's personal health, which, you know, Ms. Davis was mentioning in her presentation, but includes nutrition, nutrition education, and hygiene involving, you know, the nurses, the wellness teachers, the PE, health, food service, teachers, administration, and our families. And this is what's great about the committee. I'm looking, right now, I think it was every quarter that they were meeting, and everybody looks like they want to meet once a month because it's that important to our students and our teachers and faculty. They make this great. So, great job. So, I just got to sit and listen, but there's some really involved teachers and educators.
Absolutely. And I just want to thank the chairman of that committee, John G. Latart. He came to meet with me. We had a planning session, and he's just been so excited about so much in the strategic plan that really speaks to comprehensive wellness and social and emotional learning and just overall health. And it's really exciting to see so many things in each of the schools beginning to embrace that and already roll with it. We're already seeing an impact of it. I know that Tony will be able to speak to that as part of his budget proposal. We're already seeing an impact on attendance of sixth graders compared to prior years. So, the data is already showing positive movement. So, I just want to thank everybody for their efforts, and I'm excited to see what's in store for Milford through all this great work.
Great. Thank you. Next is a technology update, but I don't believe we have, we have Jerry here, but.
So, we haven't had the first meeting. I was scheduling, oh, sorry. So, Jerry, Senator, Director of Technology, I was working on scheduling the first meeting, and I wasn't sure exactly who on the board would want to attend it. So, you had offered your name, but I wasn't sure if that was temporary. So, that position is not, is available.
Yeah, it was temporary until we got the boards back together. So, I mean, is anyone from the board interested in being on the technology committee?
Is that as good as the wellness one?
At least, probably better.
If you need assistance, I'm willing.
Okay.
I'm willing, Jerry.
Okay. So, I'll send up.
Okay.
I'll send out the invite to you tomorrow.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
I would also be willing if available.
Okay.
When does that committee typically meet?
Usually right around now. Usually, we let the school get started and get the technology deployed out there. And then any, I sent out the first conversation about invites yesterday, so, and today.
Is it during the day, though, those meetings?
It's usually immediately after school. So, 2:15, 2:30.
Is that troubling for you, Mr. Wood? 2:15 is when they meet?
No, it's not troubling. If Mr. Loppa's interested, I have no problem deferring there either. I just wanted to let you know I am interested if you need me.
Sure. I mean, we're both welcome to attend and join. I think that would be, I think the more the merrier, so.
All right. Awesome. I'll send you guys invites out.
Thank you.
Next is the ATC Regional Center Advisory Committee. Ms. Loppa?
Yes. So, again, like the other committees, in which I mentioned earlier tonight, we haven't had any of the meetings yet. However, I do have some information to report. Tomorrow is the Region 16 CTE meeting, and I want to thank, and I will probably massacre her name, Vassaliki Partanudi for her diligence in keeping me involved. And I'm really looking forward to tomorrow morning. Also, Frank Zaidias on November 13 will be holding the Manufacturing Exploration and Externship Summit as well, which I'll be attending. I want to give a great shout-out as well to Ms. DiMaria. I have a daughter who is working with her right now, and for what she has helped my daughter with, I can only imagine that she's, you know, making incredible strides with many other students as well. I'm really excited about the fact that she told us about a community emergency response training, which my daughter will be taking. So, I'm also going to encourage her to reach out after the fact to the Safety Committee because I think that she would be a great resource for that program. Ms. DiMaria has also been instrumental in setting up an internship for Aspen, which I'm really super excited about. I'd actually like the opportunity, and I'm going to carve out some time to meet with her and get a report on what she's doing with all the other students. Because I know the amount of email communications and opportunities that she's presented to me from the parental perspective as one individual has been really terrific. And I would encourage any parent who has a child who's interested in an internship or an externship, or the manufacturing program, or the CTE program, to please reach out to the resources at the school. They have been tremendous, and I think they're going to continue to make a big impact, both for our students and for the future generations. So, again, I assume by the next meeting, I'll have more of a report with substance. At this point, it's really just letting you know what's scheduled and that there's a lot happening behind the scenes.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kevin, capital improvement plan on the bond projects?
Yeah. So, the town CIP committee has been meeting pretty much weekly for the past month or so, a little over a month. They got a bit of a late start. So, it's been, you know, a little bit frenzied to try and get that sort of thing together, you know, and prepared for the selectmen. So, we're through all the town departments and just now have to, you know, get together and try and prioritize those items. On the school side, we have our $5 million plug that we've been carrying for several years now that corresponds with the retirement of the Jocks that, you know, as we all know, the needs are quite a bit greater than 5 million, but that's the number we've been carrying. And, you know, we'll, you know, a future board will determine, you know, exactly what that looks like, I think. So, that's really where that's at, that, you know, the next, next couple of meetings, we should be finishing up. And, you know, I'll have a report at the end of that, too. As for the bond projects, we're pretty much complete, except for a couple of miscellaneous items generally at the middle school that we'll be finishing up soon. But the bulk of that is done. That's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I ask a question, Ms. Ditcher?
Yeah. Hold on.
Go ahead.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, just on the bond projects, can I just ask, did we extend the complete bond, or what's the status on that?
I don't believe Jane is here to do that unless you know, Kevin?
I don't know the exact, but we're pretty close to the end, and there are a couple of, a couple of projects that we're still planning on completing at the middle school that should pretty well exhaust that.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to ask if we could release the administrative team. They have an early start for school tomorrow.
Yeah, I wasn't, we weren't holding them there.
I know. I just wanted to wait for a good spot.
Were you holding them or something?
No.
Okay. Have a great night. Drive carefully.
Have a good evening, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. On a new business, first one is potential non-budgeted warrant articles. And I knew that Jane is not part. She's back in the office working on budget. So, I think that the non-budgeted warrant articles, we're negotiating a contract, we're in the middle of negotiating the contracts. And I know we've got a list working, or there should be a list coming of all of the needs that the administration team is putting together. Is there anything else that stands out that is something that the board should be looking at as a non-budget warrant article?
I know we have a list, but I'll have to defer to Jane on that. And we'll have that list for you in November.
We're going to need to start looking at both that and obviously, I know the next item, we might as well throw it up now, is the discussion of the capital needs analysis. I know that Mr. Cooper is here. But I guess if we're going to discuss capital needs, we do have a running project book of all the large-ticket items. And I know there's some field stuff and some other things that have been pushed a little bit in the timeframe. So, I don't know if you want to just briefly get up and talk about that report, or we're just going to wait to see that?
We're going to have to wait to see. I probably want to, I think, Mr. Wood, we have approximately $43,000 left over in the bond. We plan on putting up some, the security doors at the middle school and taking care of some of the restroom, countertops for the new sinks. So, I think that we'll expend pretty much all of that by the time we're done. We don't expect to start on the doors until February break, and we're already starting on the countertops. We already had a couple of them templated. So, that's where we stand on that. But I think it should expend most of the, most of the bond money.
Okay.
So, as far as the capital needs, yeah.
I guess we'll wait for the list.
I mean, if we're going to go off of the list that we have, there is, you know, we added a couple other items to it. But I think we should have, everyone should have the list. So, we're all on the same page for that.
So, there was, if I remember right, in the budget last year, there was a couple items that we scaled back. And I think that those need to be looked at, like locks, items, shades, security items.
Yeah. So, yeah, we have, yeah. So, right off the top of my head, we're probably, we need about $15,000 for the shades to finish here at the high school, and probably another $10,000 over at Jocks. And that should complete all the shades, lockdown shades for the exterior windows. That's not including doors. We haven't put that. We had about, most of the locks were taken care of here. I think there's a few, probably around $10,000 left to do different storage areas, stuff like that, that we didn't take care of. We didn't take care of some of the exterior doors because they weren't being used or utilized. They're on a double-door entrance. So, we have that. But.
Jane's here.
Oh, okay. Well, I Well, I won't bomb you with, you know, the full list, but I would just say that I know that there was items that we scratched through the process in order to move other things, but when we have, when the board gets this report, I'd like to see a full problem plan of, you know, where everything is, and start looking at, you know, some of these things and trying to check off a bunch of the items. Just don't know how far we'll go, but we really need to, as Mr. Lopp has said, we've really got to focus on some, some of the infrastructure, the buildings, and I know we've got some roof issues and some other things that definitely going to have to start getting, you know, addressed, not run into that kick-the-can-down-the-road cycle that we've.
We should have a plan in place for all of that.
And?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wood?
So I just want to say, specific to this capital needs, last meeting, we passed the concept of forming a facilities standing committee. One of the things that I see with our current list is that we have a capital needs list that hasn't been aligned with our strategic plan. It isn't informed by that, and therefore we have some difficulty, in my opinion, with prioritization without doing that exercise. We also really haven't done a facilities analysis, and I don't mean us doing what we think, but actually developing a strategic plan. So I just want to have that out in the open as we go through this needs analysis, that it's really challenging to do a comprehensive needs analysis and prioritization without that data.
Yeah, I agree. I just think we're close to the budget where we've got to actually have some discussions, probably, you know, originally right now, to have those discussions before that committee gets up and running and actually probably gets in place enough with all the timing that's out there.
Understood. If I might just suggest that as we go through the budget process, that the administrative team be prepared with their recommendations to connect them back to the strategic plan.
I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on those two items?
Good.
Good, thank you, Bill.
I was listening in the other room, and you had questions about the warrant articles, so I did just want to let you know. We had presented a couple last year for expendable trusts and for capital reserves, and I've been encouraged by our auditors when they were here just a few weeks ago to say, please bring them up again. So those are going to, hopefully, you know, I'll put them on for consideration. And again, we're hoping to have the Mesa contract, and I'm not sure how we're going to do with the contingency, but there's some other alternatives for that, too.
And I think some of those warrant articles that were alignments in the audit, if I remember, are trust alignments.
Yes.
Right, it's just the charters and some other things of the fines that were in there that was identified in the audit. Is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, next on the list is old business. It's the policy 2402, which Cooperation and Respect, which was tabled at the last board meeting. It was requested to put back onto the agenda. It didn't really need a request to come on there. By process, tabling the motion, tabling the policy, it has to have something to be done with it. So that was requested by Mr. Wood to put it back on there for action. Mr. Wood, I'll open it up to you since you put that up there on policy 2402.
Mr. Chair, in the interest of collaboration, I know we've discussed, I know process, I was wondering if we might be able to get some sort of report out on the feedback from the meeting with the MTA, seeing that that was brought up as far as 2170 compliance.
So I think the first thing to do is, for process and policy, is right now, policy 2402 sits at a table area. Before we can have discussions, it has to have an action item to it.
So I would motion to remove policy 2402 from the table for discussion purposes.
Do I have a second in moving, moving the 2402 from the table back in front of the board?
I'll second it.
Any discussions from any board members?
Yeah, I have a discussion. As far as approving it, I know that I reviewed the policy 2402 and the recommended updates provided by Mrs. Lopp, along with Mrs. Erdotti's recommended changes, and I do support those changes to be made by the policy committee.
Okay, any other discussions?
I just want to state that after participating in the meeting, it's apparent that the policy should not be voted on tonight. The policy needs to be further reviewed. The policy needs to incorporate language I had suggested and sent out to the policy committee, or language, or and, language that Mr. Drew, Dr. Huzanga, and I were able to explore in tandem with the MTA. I think that my recommendation was to separate it into two policies, as everyone on the policy committee should have received a while back. I also sent it to the school board. It definitely needs to remain tabled this evening, though. I would not support any vote at this point in time. I think that warrants further discussion by the policy committee and further revision.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wood?
Yes, I'm just, as I said, I'm looking to take this off the table so we can actually discuss it. That's, I think they need to get there before we can discuss it. So I do have some discussion points, but I'd like to reserve those until we see if it comes off the table by vote.
Mr. Drew?
I would also just like to thank Mrs. Erdotti and Mrs. Shadine for meeting with us last week. I thought it was a very productive meeting. It was certainly good to hear the concerns that you brought forth, and I understand them. I would speak in favor of the original policy because I think that everyone agreed that the current policy we have really is a non-policy. It's almost a platitude, and that we all need, or we need something in place that, you know, is a little more meaningful. You know, we may disagree on some of the language that's in there. The language that I think was most concerning, most of, most of it falls within the code of conduct anyway that they, that they had to sign as, you know, part of their agreement and, you know, to become educators. So to me, there wasn't, there wasn't any really scary language in there that, you know, that, you know, certainly my employer expects that sort of conduct from me. So I was, I was not as concerned about the language that they were, and they did send some comments back to us that redlined a few of the items that were, that were in there. But again, most of those items were, are part of the code of conduct that they adhere to anyway.
Mr. Chair?
And just one second. And the other thing, you know, I just lost my train of thought there, but it's a policy that has already been to the policy committee. It's been vetted by them, it's been vetted by legal, and I think that, you know, while it may, it may warrant some tweaking, and there's no reason that we can't tweak it down the road. I think it's, it's a good start, and it's a good, it's a good framework for us to build upon. So again, I am in favor of the original policy as it was written.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just clarifying, the motion is just to remove it from the table so then we can have some sort of action. Is that accurate?
Yes, the process is, is that it is a tabled motion. It first would have to be voted on to come off the table. Once it comes off the table, if it does, if it doesn't come off the table, then this is the second meeting after the motion was tabled, so then the policy would really have to restart at the policy committee. The other process is as it comes off, and it does get approved from the, from coming off the table, the board has the authority to make a motion to do whatever with that motion. So, I mean, with that policy, because that's the action of the board. Something has to happen with that policy. So you are right, and the first step of this is, it's got to decide if it comes off the table, that's step one.
Mr. Chair?
So, did I answer your question, Mr. Wood?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Hannah?
Last month, I had requested to be tabled, so it went back to the policy committee to be reviewed for changes. Did that happen?
So I reviewed the minutes, and I reviewed the actual footage, and it was just tabled. It wasn't tabled, there was no language of a motion to send it to the policy committee, it was a motion to table. So tabling it is still at the board level.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on that? So as an after-action to that meeting, I actually sent, as I said earlier, my suggestion for basically revising the current policy on the table, which is entitled Cooperation and Respect, and breaking it into two policies, which it was ultimately based on, one of which was called Staff Ethics, the second of which is called Staff Conduct, and removing some extra verbiage that I know that the MTA found troublesome, and I know you don't, Mr. Drew. However, I tend to agree with the MTA. And also, I know they wanted the removal of one of the words, which seems like a very simplistic change to me, changing, you know, "All employees of the district are expected to maintain high standards in their conduct, both on and off duty. District employees are responsible for providing leadership in the school and community," changing that, too. "District leaders are responsible for providing leadership in the school community." I really feel that their feedback warrants implementation, and I did send out those suggested changes to the policy committee. Unfortunately, only one person on the policy committee responded to me, and this was several weeks ago. So again, if it was tabled for further discussion and potential revision, I think it's a mistake to put it on the table and vote on it tonight, and I would like to make a motion to not, to keep it tabled for further review by the policy committee before it moves forward for a vote.
So as a, as a point of order, the first thing that we're discussing now is to see if it gets off the table. Then it can have an action after that. But right now, there's a motion and a second to remove it from the table and bring it back in front of the committee.
Understood.
For a decision, whether it's to the policy committee, or it's to an amendment, to a revision, or whatever, all those things. So I think that's where we are first.
Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to express my reasoning.
No, I think you'll have another chance because it'll have another, it sounds like you're going to have another motion that would take an action to it, but I just want to make sure that we stay on point with, let's see if it even goes that far. It may not. Any other discussions on?
Well, I guess, to me, I mean, it seems like it has to come off the table or nothing, nothing happens. I mean, it's in a black hole at this point.
Well, I think if it, if it doesn't come off the table, then by policy, it's to the next meeting. That is this next meeting. There hasn't been a motion to kill it or anything. It's going to end up going back to the policy committee, and the policy committee is going to have to redraft a proposal to send through the chain and send back in front of the board as a new policy.
May I ask a question of Dr. Huzanga? I know last week we discussed scheduling another policy meeting, and I know you're busy. I'm just curious, I know the indication was that that would be put on the schedule. Do we have any idea when the next policy committee meeting will be?
I believe first thing tomorrow morning, Janice had planned on sending out an invite for next week. She was just trying to coordinate my schedule with the rest of the administrative schedules, so she was working on that today.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wood?
So I was going to kind of hold off on the rest of it until we get, does it come off the table or not? But with all the discussion, I just want to point out a couple of things. So I did send a potential amendment to the superintendent, but I'd ask if the superintendent could share the staff conduct document that I sent you with the board, as well as the staff ethics document I shared with the board, with you for the board. What this does is, you know, in trying to hear everybody and trying to come to some sort of consensus, there were several things that I got as we discussed this policy. One was, people didn't like the title of Cooperation and Respect. The other was, some of the items in here people felt were over the top. Mrs. Lopp is quite, excuse me, Mrs. Lopp is quite correct that she sent these two policies that I've kind of highlighted in different colors. And I'd just like to explain, you know, the policy that we have in front of us, if we take it off the table, the document that's titled Staff Conduct, or excuse me, Staff Ethics, is colored in an awful lot of green, and what that's indicating is those elements of the School Board Association recommended policies have been incorporated verbatim into 2402. The Staff Ethics one, the things that are highlighted in yellow, have been incorporated into 2402, although not verbatim, in substance. And so I think there's a great opportunity to have a discussion. I'd like to pull this off so that we can have the discussion about the amendments that Mr. Lopp has proposed, because the amendment she's proposed, we actually have about 98% in this document already, and I think there's a way for us to move forward, considering that this policy has been before the public, not just the board, but before the public since August 28th, which is eight weeks. So there's been ample time to digest, make comment. I've reviewed the MTA document that they sent back with the strikeouts and the comments that they put. Most of their comments are related to being redundant or not necessary in their opinion. My comment to that is, is that, you know, being clear in one document that affects everybody, not just the professional staff, is helpful. So it's one spot where you can go and you know what the content is.
So are you asking to table or not table?
So?
No, I'm asking to take it off the table. That's my motion, that's the second, and then once it's off the table, I'd like to discuss where we're at with it.
So in front of the board is the motion to bring it from the table back in front of the board. Is there any other discussions on that piece, not going into the, any other motions beside that, or the working part of this? It's about the motion itself before we can get to the next pieces. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of bringing policy 2402, Cooperation and Respect, that was tabled on 10/7 back in front of the board tonight? I, myself, Kevin, and Mr. Wood?
Aye.
All opposed? The, okay, the motion to bring the policy forward in front of the board has passed.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wood?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer an amendment to 2402, and if I could ask the superintendent to pass that out so it's clear where I'm not there, I want to make sure it was in writing.
So?
But you can see on this is just a change.
So let me just clarify, Mr. Wood. Are you making a motion to amend 2402?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if the correct motion is to move 2402 and then amend it, but the intent of what I'm trying to accomplish here is to try to settle 2402 this evening.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Whatever motion is appropriate, I entertain that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? The policy committee would need to approve any amended document. I understand that Mr. Wood took the liberty of taking the document that I already prepared and scrubbing it back into one document. One of the reasons that I felt that it should be two separate documents is because, because staff ethics is one policy and staff conduct is another. And I think that those terminologies are widely accepted across other districts, and I have never seen a policy called Cooperation and Respect in any other district. And I don't think that Mr. Wood's amendment that he sent directly to the superintendent is the proper protocol. It needs to go back to the policy committee for voting, and the purpose of the MTA meeting was to gather their feedback and incorporate it into the document, or documents, as I've been asking for several weeks back now to separate it out. It has been in discussion, and my stance has remained unchanged.
So, and I can, let me try to clarify, is that if that was the case, then 24, then I would go back to what Mr. Drew said, is 2402 came out of the policy committee as stands. So, I mean, that's where the policy committee was. Policy is developed and designed stands. So, I mean, that's where the Policy Committee was. Policy is developed and designed by the board, but somehow, we're going to get through this policy. So, I mean, sending it back to the Policy Committee seems like it's going to come back in 2402's form, as it's already been there a couple of times. And I think that, I, quite frankly, I've seen this come up. I've got the MTA. I've got another, I've got yours. So, somewhere in the middle, someone, we have to figure this out.
That's my thought. So, my recommendation was to send it back with the recommendations, back to the Policy Committee. That's nothing that we have to finish up tonight and close. I don't know what the big rush is. It's a policy that's supposed to support, you know, the faculty and the teachers and the students. Why the big rush? I mean, we were doing it out of good faith from the last meeting to table it, and I wouldn't make, you know, I'm not going to make a motion right now, but we can go back to the Policy Committee. If the Policy Committee comes back with the recommended changes, then we can put a vote on it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood.
I'd move 2402 for final passage for discussion.
Why the big rush, Rick?
So, hold on a second. So, move 2402 as tabled in its form for passage. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
So, hold on, discussions?
We're making a mistake right now. We have been, excuse me, Mr. Wood, I'm...
So, hold on. Let me recognize you. I want you to speak, Mr. Wood. Please don't make a comment while Ms. Talapa's speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that we're making a mistake. I think that we talk about building bridges and improving communication, and I think this is a perfect opportunity. It is such a small, minute detail. And rather than choosing to work together and build cohesive communication, and let the people know who took time out of their schedule after school hours to meet with us, that yes, we hear your feedback. It is important to us that we are basically saying, "We heard your feedback. Thanks for taking your time. Bye-bye." And I just think it's a mistake, and I absolutely will not support a vote. And I plead with my fellow board members to recognize the nature of these types of decisions, and the unnecessary problems that we cause. We have been discussing this for how long now? This should be back in the Policy Committee's lap for revision, incorporating the feedback that we've gathered. I won't say it again. I apologize for my redundance.
Okay. So, comments I have is, I believe that 2402 needs some adjustments. I think I'm not going to support, I guess, I guess, in my eyes, I think that it's in front of us, and I think that as I look at these different piles of stuff that everybody recommends, I'm thinking that somewhere in the middle, I'm going to ask for an amendment to this policy. But I think the, right now, it's, in order to get to that discussion of the amendment, it's got to move to getting back in front of this discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood?
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, if it's going to be amended, you might correct that amendment is in order at this point in time.
Well, I think we have you, a motion and a second. There's discussion.
Correct.
And we can now, after discussion, as long as...
And there's a discussion. Can I amend it?
Yes, you can. You can take feedback to the amendment, or if you have an amendment presentation, or amendment something. It looks like you provided some things. But, quite frankly, sending this back to the Policy Committee back and forth over eight weeks is just, it's a little bit unnerving here, that it's come out of the Policy Committee one way, it's come out of the, it's come back, it's revised, it's everyone, it's cut paste. So, let's have it. We're all here. Let's figure out what goes, what stays, what the discussion is, because it's just, for me, it's, I've gotten one, two, three, four ones, and I think it's, we've got to have a discussion here on what's happening, because if it goes back to the Policy Committee, it's going to come right back out as 2402 that's already here.
Mr. Chairman?
That's going to work very well.
Can we vote on the current thing that's on the table and then discuss?
So, hold on. I think Mr. Hannon had a, wanted a comment after.
Mr. Chair, I was asking a question, and you were answering it?
Yeah, I answered it. I think, I think we can amend it at this point. I mean, that's what the discussion points are. It's in the discussion.
And that's the answer I was trying to get, so that I could offer an amendment?
Can I?
Am I recognized for that, sir?
No. Let me, let me hear Mr. Hannon first, and then we'll get back to you.
You know, I think, you know, after all the conversation that we had, you know, and the additions of amendments by Mr. Wood, further illustrates the need of going back to the Policy Committee, you know, with the recommendations, including Mr. Wood's. My responsibility as a board member was to provide input. It wasn't to sit here and make all these amendments. That's the committee's job. Last month, we made a recommendation, out of good faith, to send it back, in my terms, send it back to the Policy Committee for review. Yes, it got tabled, but unfortunately, it sat on the table for, you know, a month, you know, between meetings. I still think it needs to go back to the Policy Committee, take into, the changes into consideration, and whatever the Policy Committee comes back with after that, then we can table it for a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair.
Hold on. We'll go back to him as he, before him. Mr. Wood.
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, what I'd like to do is move a motion to amend Policy 2402 with two respects, and you'll see those on the document I provided in red. It's to recognize the feedback that's come in about the title of Cooperation and Respect, and just call the policy Staff Conduct and Ethics. And then, it's also meant to recognize Mrs. Talapa's suggestions that the contents of the two School Board policies really should be what we follow, and incorporate the only section of staff conduct that is not in our 2402 policy, and that is in red. I believe it's Section B. The, that's the motion, and I'd like to explain if it gives a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Yep. So, I've got to follow this motion, too. So, you're amending. Mr. Drew's second. Discussion, Mrs. Talapa.
Yes. As a member of the Policy Committee, I sent my suggested changes out several weeks ago, initially to the School Board, and then I was told that's not the way to do it. I need to send it to the Policy Committee. So, I sent it to the Policy Committee, and I got feedback from one member. I am not going to blindly support somebody who's not on the Policy Committee making amendments to a policy that I have been trying to, you talk a lot about the proper policy, the proper procedure. The proper procedure is to not send to the superintendent how you want to make a change to a policy, and then hand it out at a meeting and expect your fellow board members to vote on it, unless some of them have been privy to see it prior to this meeting. I am not going to take 15 minutes from everybody's time who's sitting in the audience to go through this with a fine-toothed comb, and there's no way. And I'm not going to support a policy that I don't have a chance to read through. And again, this is not one board member's decision. This is a Policy Committee decision. This needs to be tabled, to go back to the Policy Committee. They could look at the changes that I suggested several weeks ago, and I would definitely look at incorporating Mr. Wood's changes as well, but not in this manner.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood.
So, a couple things. The only, just to clarify, the only amendment here, this is 2402. The only proposal for amendment are the two things in red, which is the title and the one section that is brought over from the School Board Association's recommended policy on staff conduct. So, I just want to clarify that. And then, I'd like an opportunity, if I could, to just go down through the feedback that we had. So, the, Mr. Drew and Mrs. Talapa did meet with the MTA, and I received an email today, as I believe all board members did, with the suggestion from the MTA. And essentially, what the MTA suggestions are to cross out about 50 percent of the policy. But when I read the comments that they've made, and each one of these yellow lines have comments, it says redundant, code of conduct and ethics. It says, "This is redundant. Everybody has to obey the rules under obey laws, state and national, local, state, and national." It says redundant, professional development is required to maintain certification. It says unnecessary. It says redundant, required by law. And it says for comments, redundant code of conduct. So, the reason I asked about an update from the people that met with the MTA is to try to get some basis for these comments. The reason I wanted to bring this up is because, in order for us to actually vote on this, the only thing the MTA has asked for is the strike sections of this policy. What Ms. Talapa has asked for multiple times is to incorporate the School Board Association policies. What my amendment does is actually carry out Ms. Talapa's request. It doesn't add anything. It just merely takes what we had in 2402, compares it to the two School Board policies that Ms. Talapa gave us, and then the amendment is to bring in one section that was not incorporated into the draft policy 2402.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Is proper protocol, when, just for future reference, when we're discussing policies that have already been in front of the Policy Committee, can we, as board members, simply make recommendations and send them to the superintendent before the meeting and ask to have them changed without the eyesight of the Policy Committee? I'm just trying to understand this.
Yeah, the board, any board member can make an amendment to any policy, any board member, on any policy.
So, if the School Board Policy Committee puts a policy forth, and it's on the table, the proper protocol would be, before the meeting, to send the superintendent my suggested revisions, and then ask everyone to vote on them?
Well, you still got to present it to the board, and I think it's probably because he's not here to hand them to everyone, but anyone can bring in a motion.
So, this is the proper protocol? Anytime I want to change a policy, I'm just, I want to, I want to understand it for future reference.
So, if the policy is in front of the board, and it's come out of the Policy Committee, the board ultimately has authority on the policy. They can kill the policy coming out of the, out of the Policy Committee. They can amend it. They can adopt it in its full nature. But the policies of the School Board and the school district are approved by the board. That's, that's where the authority is. It isn't what the committee says, because the board's ultimate authority is making policy for the district. So, anyone can bring an amendment as a board member, if the policy is on the agenda, and it's coming up, you can hand in that thing.
It's just unfortunate that, when I asked the proper way to do this several weeks ago, I was told that the proper way to do it was to present it to the Policy Committee, which is what I did.
And the Policy Committee sent out 2402?
Hasn't met since then. The Policy Committee hasn't met since then.
But again, this policy is in the agenda. That's why it got tabled. It delayed. Now it's back, so we've got to have something to do with the policy. And that's what I think we're trying to get to.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood?
Just for clarification on why I sent the document to the superintendent, because I was asking for it to be printed for tonight's meeting, and I'm in Maryland and unable to print that and provide it to the board, so I asked the superintendent to do that for me.
When did you do that?
10:30 last night.
It would have been nice to have had this included in the agenda, this suggestion, rather than, you guys talk about blindsiding people. I think that that's a perfect example of, had you really wanted our approval on this, and you had already seen my multiple emails, that it would have been a really simple gesture to send it to everyone, or to ask the superintendent to disseminate it to the School Board members and have it as consideration. Again, I, I'm not going to read this policy right now, because I can't, I need to sit down and compare it.
So, I've just got a question. This one is your recommendations, these ones in yellow?
So, my recommendations were sent a couple of times. They're just, really, it was breaking it out into the two.
It was like this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Hold it out.
Yeah. And then, after our meeting, the only other revision I would have done would be to remove, Ron, if I can just see that, it would be to remove the word "and" right here. And again, I just think this belongs. And then, it was just the extra verbiage. There were a couple of areas that I thought should be removed, the first two paragraphs, and I thought comply would, again, I just don't think this is the time and...
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand if I'm following.
I can reemail this to you.
No, I think this is what you sent me.
Yeah.
Because it's in this folder for 2402. But, so, let me just ask a question, Mr. Wood. The one that just got handed out, 2402, and you've changed the name Staff Ethics and Conduct, is all the green, is all the green that you've highlighted there, adds, or is that?
No, the only thing that is add is the red text. The green indicates that that is incorporated verbatim from the School Board Association Policy on Staff Ethics. And the yellow highlights on that indicate that the, that is included, not verbatim, but in substance. It's the material that was presented in 2402 originally. I just tried to cross-reference it to the School Board Association policies, because Ms. Talapa suggested that we just accept the School Board Association policy. So, I was trying to cross-reference it. So, the yellow just indicates that those items are included in the Policy on Staff Conduct. And the proposal for amendment is to pull in the one section in Staff Conduct that is not incorporated into 2402, and then change the title. Those are the only changes to the document 2402 that my motion is for.
Okay. Because I, just quickly, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing it to ask it, but quickly, looking at 2402 that Ms. Talapa submitted, and the new one with the amendments...
I can point out two differences, Ron.
Yeah, there's a little bit of word differences, but the items are...
Well, no, no, above, above Section C, I had suggested removing, comply with reasonable rules and expectations established by the superintendent and individual supervisors, as that belonged in staff conduct, but he's combining the two. I don't know if that's going someplace else now. But I had also suggested... So, the paragraph, "Employees are put on notice. This list is not intended to be exhaustive." That particular paragraph, I thought...
Mr. Chairman?
Let Ms. Talapa finish, if you still...
I thought just should be removed entirely, and then replaced with the verbiage in Staff Conduct. And I know that those are some of the areas that the MTA was concerned with as well. Again, I don't think that we're at a point to vote on this. I really think that it needs to be, I tried to follow the procedures which were set forth, to send my recommendations through the proper channels. I would strongly encourage that we just let the Policy Committee rewrite this policy, and perhaps it will be able to remain as one policy called Staff Ethics and Conduct. I do appreciate the willingness to change the title, but I just think it warrants, I would like to see it operate the way it's supposed to operate, and have the Policy Committee scrub it, put it forth for our vote.
Mr. Hannon?
I agree. I don't know why we're sitting here for this long, talking about this one. We could just be sending it to the Policy Committee and let them review it. I mean, Mr. Wood had recommended changes. Let the I mean, Mr. Wood had recommended changes, let the Policy Committee do their, the job that they signed up for, and let them take a look at it. I don't know why we have to do that tonight.
Well, I think because he thought, he made a motion to amend.
Oh yeah, I appreciate the motion. I'm just making my comments.
Mr. Wood, anything?
Yeah, I mean, I understand everybody's comments, Mr. Chair. Here's my concern, this was, this is the same policy that came out of the Policy Committee on August 8th. There was an opportunity at the most recent Policy Committee meeting for anybody to bring up suggested changes, and they didn't. After that Policy Committee meeting, a suggestion was made by Ms. Talapa to incorporate, to scrap this policy altogether and adopt the School Board Association policies verbatim. So all I'm doing is comparing those requests and trying to be responsive to everybody's input. I evaluated the, the information that we got this afternoon, that was the suggestions from the MTA, which frankly are just to strike pieces, not to change anything. So, what I'm proposing is really nothing more than moving forward on 2402. If you want the amendment that changes the title and the extra section to make it, make it so that the policy reflects the two School Board Association policies as Ms. Talapa had requested, great. If we don't, vote down the motion, and let's vote on 2402 as it came out of committee.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe Mr. Wood was at the last Policy Committee meeting, where I did express a desire to change this, and I was informed that the way to do that would be to send my suggestions to the committee, which I did. I think that we've wasted enough of everyone's time tonight, and I propose that we move forward with the vote.
Well...
I don't think it's an individual decision, I, I...
Well, what I'm trying to do is, I'm just trying to, you know, for me, I don't want to turn it into an individual vote without thought through, right? Because in actuality, in front of this board, it is an individual vote. Anyone can just put this down. I'm trying to decipher this in my own mind, to see which way I'm going to vote, because I, I've read that today, and I did a side-by-side comparison of those two, and I'm just trying to decipher if, if sending this back to the Policy Committee, developing two policies, but I'm not, I mean, I guess, in that case, I mean, if it comes back out of the Policy Committee, the board again has the authority to amend each of those as two policies, and put in and take away anything that a board member wants by majority vote. So I'm just trying to be, understand what's missing, or what's been taken away, or what needs to go in it. And quite frankly, I guess, looking at all these three different things, I guess I'm not too, Mr. Wood, are you, I mean, I guess, where you are with the amended one, which is your green one, with the red, that's the full policy that covers everything that's in both elements?
That is correct. The colors are just representations of what is, what is in the School Board Association policies. They're just illustrated for that purpose. None of that language has changed from what is posted in 2402 on the agenda. The only thing that's changed from what's posted in 2402 on the agenda is the stuff in red as a, as a motion to amend. If the, if the board doesn't want to amend, that's fine, and then we're back to voting on 2402. So if people aren't comfortable, I completely understand. My suggestion is that people aren't comfortable with the amendment, to vote no.
There are sections in the amendment that, in my recommendations, had been removed, which are still included. So I'm not comfortable voting on the amendment.
Mr. Drew?
Yeah, I just, Mr. Wood, I appreciate the amount of work you, you put into this and color coding things to try and relay, you know, what, you know, where you got different information from. And that, you know, I, I believe what you've put here is, is trying to, you know, incorporate everybody's input into it, and, and to try and come together on something. Unfortunately, I think for me, it kind of muddied the waters, because I can't, you know, in the, you know, in the confines of this meeting, read through this entire thing and, and determine, "Yeah, yeah, that's got everything in there that the other one did," or, you know, I can't, I can't be sure that something's not missing from this, that I'm just not seeing right now, you know, 9 o'clock at night, or whatever time it is. So, while I appreciate it, and I think this, this probably is, you know, a well-written document and, and a good amendment, I, I don't think I'm going to support this either.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wood.
You'd like to withdraw the motion to amend?
Okay. So, in front of us, if you withdraw the motion for amend, is the continued motion of to move 2402 as is, as passage, which is coming off the table with no amendments, in front of the board for passage. And I have a second already listed from Mr. Drew. Any more discussion on that?
Mr. Chair.
That's what's, that's what's now in front of the board. Mr. Wood?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood.
So, I just want to say, you know, I'd like to move the policy forward so we can get a policy in effect. As Mr. Drew said earlier, policies can be updated and amended at any time. I think this captures the substance of where we want to be, and it's been out there for several months, and that's why I ask support.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Drew?
I would actually like to present an amendment to remove the word "and," as discussed earlier in that, I have the...
I'll second that.
You know where I mean.
Which one is that?
I need the...
It's in the first paragraph. The wording term of this right here.
Oh, okay. It's right in the first paragraph, where it says, "Leadership in school and community," just scratching "and" and having "leadership in the school community."
School community, correct.
Is that what the amendment is?
Yep.
Question.
So, we first have to vote on the amending policy 2402 with striking the word "and." Any more discussion on that? All those in favor of removing the word "and" in the community in the first paragraph of 2402 as presented off the table? All those in favor? Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Aye as well. That has been stricken. The word "and" for the amendment. So now, we're back to...
I'd like to make an amendment to remove the verbiage "Comply with reasonable rules and expectations established by the superintendent and individual supervisors."
Where is that? Which one? Which paragraph?
Last line, paragraph B.
What was that motion again, Holly?
To remove the paragraph "Comply with reasonable rules and expectations established by the superintendent and individual supervisors," as it initially, in my reasoning, is because that one is belonging in Staff Conduct, not... I don't even, are we still looking at the policy that you're calling cooperation and respect at this point?
Yeah, that's right. The tabled motion is what's back in front of us. With that amendment of striking "and."
Mr. Chair, is there a second to the motion?
I think, are you still trying to clarify it?
Let me just ask a question. In lieu of saving time at this point, if you three decide to vote on this and pass this, the next time we meet, can I make a motion to revisit this with the one that I put before the Policy Committee?
Absolutely. There's a policy on how to revisit and...
Okay.
Appeal, repeal motions.
I mean, I think that we've discussed this enough, and I don't want to...
So, I just want to go over the motion that's, there's a motion to amend that you presented, Ms. Talapa.
No, I, I removed that amendment from the table. That motion, I removed that motion.
Okay. So we're, we're right still with, for, to move 2402 as passages with the amended motion, the amended policy with striking "and." So that's what's on the table. Some more discussion?
Yes. Again, I'm going to be walking away from this meeting pretty disappointed. I think it was pretty sneaky to add this into old business, regardless of what it was, without, as a board, being able to send this policy in good faith back to the Policy Committee. And now to bring it back, you know, off the table so we can vote, vote on it to, because God forbid if we don't have a policy out there for this right now, we're doing a disservice. And, you know, we did this out of good faith, and we just flushed that right down the toilet. I'm very disturbed by that.
Well, I think we're following the process.
I'm sure you are.
You know, I'm trying to get to that and decipher that so I can make a decision.
Well, I'm just deciphering what's going on, and I'm pretty disturbed by it.
Well, and, and I would tell you that I'm trying to follow this, right? But that type of, I'm trying to work to what we need to do with this policy, but, you know, as a vote...
Well, I recommended about a half hour ago what to do with it.
So... So we have, Mr. Drew?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, there is currently a Policy Committee meeting set up for tomorrow morning, is that correct?
No, we haven't set that up yet.
She's going to send out an invitation tomorrow.
Invitation.
She's going to schedule it and invite us.
But it would likely be prior to our next meeting, our next board meeting. So, regardless of what happens tonight, this policy can be revisited at that time by the Policy Committee, but at least we have a policy in place that's more than two sentences. Because I think, you know, it sounds like we're in agreement on, you know, a good percentage of this. There, there are some items that, you know, we may not be, and, and, you know, that may be, you know, for further discussion with the Policy Committee. But at least at this point, we have a policy in place. It's not just, you know, two sentences that don't really mean anything.
Okay. So, at my discussions, I guess, from my input, I'm looking at both of these policies. I think, I'm, I'm on the fence of moving it back to the Policy Committee to create two new policies and adding these, or passing it and then sending it back to the Policy Committee, but I do agree that it seems a little bit confusion, confusing in front of us with three or four different versions, and some amendments. So I'm, I'm a little on the fence on, on that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wood?
So we really don't have three or four things in front of us at this point. We have Policy 2402 as amended by striking the word "and," a policy that's been present and publicized for over two months. So, we can act on the policy and have something in effect and modify that if need be, because we don't, we're not going to come to that agreement this evening. Or we can do nothing and not have a policy other than the two lines. And so that's why I'd like to move this policy, get it in effect, and then if we need to modify something, then we have a process for that.
Okay. Any further discussion? So, all those in favor of moving 2402 with the amendment of striking the word "and" for passage tonight? Say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
And I'm going to say aye as well. And motion passes, this policy is in effect tonight. So, Ms., Dr. Heisinger, I would like to put this, 2402, in front of the Policy Committee. Please schedule that with the team tomorrow. And I would ask that the amendments of all this discussion that was put, put in front of that committee...
Mr. Chairman, you neglected to ask who was opposed. I would just like it to be on record that I'm, you didn't ask who was opposed.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. I did miss that in all the writings and confusion. So I'm sure... Okay. And if you can, make sure that this is in front of the Policy Committee for the next meeting, and put all these notes in different ones so that this can come back in front of the, at the next board meeting. Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of October 7th. They are in your packet. Anyone have any comments of the October 7th minutes? Move to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of October 7th? All opposed? Mr. Wood, what'd you?
Aye.
Okay. And then also, as approval of minutes of September 16th, I have a motion of those minutes to amend.
Second.
So let me tell you the motion.
We already discussed it.
The motion to amend the minutes would be to strike on line 116 of the minutes, where it says, "Mrs. Suzanne Shadine addressed the board and commented she did not agree with some of the numbers." What her real statement was in there was, wanted to clarify some of the numbers and statements that were quoted in the article. So that is my amendment. No, the summary of, these are summary of minutes, so I didn't go through that list. So... Do I have a motion to amend the minutes with, I had a motion to amend it? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor of the amendments of September 16th being approved? Say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Hannah moves, Mr. Carvell moves to approve the manifest. All those in favor approving the manifest, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing done. Approval of the manifest. Do I have a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 9183?
Question, can I make any comments in regards to the meeting at all, or are we just...
Nope.
No? Really? Okay.
Do I have a motion to go into non-public session, RSA 9183 for personnel?
So moved.
Have a second? I will second it. All those in favor to enter non-public session. Say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
All opposed? What's your vote? Okay. We're now in non-public session. Thank you.